Would you like me to start over?
Pause, please.
Yeah.
It's a brand-new system.
Same.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, at 6 o'clock, I'm going to call the public hearing to order. I have a copy of the public notice of the desire to withdraw $128,000 from our Deerfield Community School Initiative Capital Reserve Trust Fund for the purpose of architectural and engineering services. Do we have any public comments regarding that? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we're going to move on to our regular agenda. With that, if you'd be ready, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and to the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. First item on the agenda is going to be our presentation and discussion with the folks from the Concord High School. And I'd like to start by allowing us to introduce ourselves to you folks and then in return allow you folks to introduce yourselves to us. So my name is Zach Langley. I'm the Chair of the School Board.
Patty Hillman, Superintendent.
Jeff Kelly, School Board Member.
T D Popoff, School Board Member.
Nate Ochsner.
Andy Reardon, School Board Member.
Mike Reardon, Principal.
Kathleen Murphy, Superintendent.
Tim Howard, Assistant Principal, Concord High School.
Caroline Chalaskis, Assistant Principal at Concord High School.
Jim Corkle, Assistant Principal, Concord High School.
And I'm Christian McPhee, Principal of Deerfield Community School. Nice to see you all.
So I'd like to thank you guys for coming down and meeting with us tonight. It's appreciated. We always enjoy hearing how our kids are doing at CHS. And I think it's probably best just to turn it over to more.
I'd like to start, if that's okay.
The floor is yours.
And thank you. I am very, very pleased and very much, I didn't want to, I wanted to introduce one little person who just moved us through. Want to introduce yourself, sir?
Yep. My name is Steve Rothenberg. When I set my phone up. And I'm the Assistant Principal of Concord High. Our main duty is to be a great technical director. So happy to be here.
So we were really excited when we called Patty to come up to you to tell you about the DFC kids are an integral part of our school, at the high school, and sharing the information, sharing their accomplishments. That was really important. And I know last year that kind of got lost in COVID. And, you know, everybody was locked down at that stage. And we were, we didn't provide that to you. But this year, we're back. We're thrilled that we can be in person with you. I think everybody's happy to be in person, quite frankly. For the first time, I saw people excited to go to meetings. So it's something, right? But the chance to be here with you tonight is really important. We have a great team at the high school. I'm going to let them take over here because they have really good things to say. Not only would we like to hear from you, do you have any questions about the report that you have? Or Michael is going to kind of highlight some of the new initiatives, as well as some of the programs that they've made on their various initiatives over the last few years. So without any further ado, you don't want to hear from you. You want to hear from the people that are helping put something around those people and do the hard work every day.
Awesome.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm assuming everybody got a copy of the report. And you saw the statistics. So I want to tell you guys, first of all, that all I did was basically take what we've done in the past in terms of the statistics that you get. And I'm going to try and answer the questions you have about any of those figures. But what I'd really like to focus on tonight is the handout here. And this will give you a better idea of what's going on at the high school. So before I do that, I want to give Steve Rothenberg a chance to talk about CRTC. I'll simply say that a lot of the stuff that we do at Concord High School is in the footsteps of some of the stuff they're doing now at CRTC. One of the most forward leaning organizations I've seen in a long time. And that's all coming from Steve's leadership. So he offers some great opportunities for all of our kids. So Steve, you want to tell?
No, first of all, I shouldn't go first. But there's a reason I'm going first from the mix-up of scheduling tonight. And I'm on the community college board. And there are finals of new chancellors coming up. And that's, I'll explain the context of that second. But it's important that I get there because the community college is a big piece of our puzzle, how we connect with those folks. So my name is Steve Rothenberg. Within Concord High School as a kid, with Justin Crowe, you know, Concord Community Technical Center. And they serve nine different high schools in the region, plus a series of private schools and charter schools. And we're almost like a school within a school. Just pass it right back to you. And when you think about, just a quick summary of my presentation, when you think about this concept. Now, that's what you definitely split. If you think about the context of what's happening right now. If I just sort of give the biggest picture of CRTC, ask yourself what college improvement is about. And when I think about college improvement, historically, if I did a full exercise for you folks, you'd probably know the college side pretty well. And it's very traditional metrics, whether it be SATs and college admissions. They all, they have those points. It's just the other, the other way. College admissions, grades, all a piece of the puzzle. And it's obviously very important. When we start towards college and careers, for years, the word career was just a throw-in. It really wasn't. People didn't really know what it meant. And when I took this job over 12 or 13 years ago, we were, the career piece was not defined. So over the past decade, Concord Community Technical Center, as well as General Career Technical Education. So it has come a long way. We look at our students and, as I say to all of them, I really don't care about graduating high school. I say it loosely. I want to know that two years, three years, or four years out, you've got a great direction. So when you're in a creative technical program at CRTC, you're getting a teacher who's experienced with secondary, experienced with industry. You're gaining a ton of skills about what it takes to have a career. And the myth of it is, in my generation, I'm 54 years old, I saw it as the auto shop, you know? But now you look at this sort of full blast training and pathway to having a really great career in the automotive tech industry. Personally, we have Hill Science Program that a good chunk of the students are going to become doctors, you know? And from my perspective, I don't care if you become a cosmetologist, an executive chef, physician, a mason, or whatever. I see them all as equal. And I think our organization reflects that. So why is that an advantage at Concord High? Most any school you look at in the state of New Hampshire, the student's going to get on a bus and travel to a creative technical center. That is not exactly the most enjoyable experience, nor is the ride from Deerfield to Concord. That's not the most enjoyable experience either. So I don't want to mix those up. I always have to play my cards on the table. But once you're in Concord High, if you want to compare yourself to other schools, like a Kirsaj, for example, Kirsaj students come longer than Deerfield. They just come for an hour and a half. And we have 40 students from Kirsaj who come down every day. So when you're a Concord High student, whether you're from Deerfield or Concord, you walk down a hallway to go to your creative technical class. It is totally infused in your program. It is an unbelievable sort of piece of the puzzle. And you have very few high schools in the state of New Hampshire. I think Mike, when he took over, and sort of explained it to me. Like, you know, he's never been in a creative high school or creative technical center. And he's like, whoa, this is, this is, it's just a whole different dynamic to a high school. And it sends messaging to all students, Deerfield, Concord alike, that they're here and we're really going to give you the full sort of force of sort of coming out here strong. So we are an organization that's basically filled to the brim right now. We've had a great run. And the handout I gave you, I just, we had an orientation the other night about 400 people at the high school. And this is the package we gave everybody. And if I just quickly summarize it, so our mission, we have really our own mission and vision. We are connected to Concord, but we really have a lot of our own identity because of what we do. Something that'd be not very exciting for you, but vocabulary and an FAQ about the CRTC just to give you a scope of where we are. And then if you go to the middle, the page after the middle, some pretty powerful data. We do some media surveys, basically about, we surveyed about 300 parents, you know, random parents. Almost 85, 90% of our students responded to survey. All the survey data is right in there. It really just shows you sort of what identity students find when they go to the creative technical center. And what I don't want to mix up is, I'm going to leave you earlier, early tonight, we work in tandem with high school. I mean, you know, a student who is developing their English skills, developing their mathematical skills. I think of high school as sort of two tiers. That first core tier, we're developing those skills. And the second tier, where you begin to sort of apply those skills, we fit right into that moment right there. And David, you see on those pages, do it. The colored page you see is about things dealing with professional skills that we value. And the last couple of things, we have, we're really an innovative school as far as assessment goes. And these are, may seem a little abstract to you. I picked our lighting, our theater program, and our auto tech program. But we're sort of a well-recognized center on a national level in how we think about assessment. And what we think about, and our teachers think about is, you can take any career path and you think about learning at four levels. Sort of a basic level of defining piece of the puzzle. Second level, sort of systems, we call it depth of knowledge, one and two. Then you get to depth of knowledge, three and four, where you apply your knowledge. And the fourth level is really being innovative. And I don't care what career you pick, there are going to be jobs at every level. And our job is to sort of expose students to these higher-level positions so they understand why they're getting an education, why it all fits in. And I think that with a good number of here for the kids in our programs, historically, it's near data back at the mic. And I think students find a place of purpose. We had a great challenge this year that Patty knows about. That with COVID, we stayed open the whole, you know, 100%, all students every day. And so Deerfield students really toughed it out. And I was, I'm just amazed sometimes. I'm like, I can't believe you're here. But they toughed it out, they showed up. And then we set up lounges for them so that when they came, they could actually do the rest of their class online. We're hanging out at Concord High School. You know, and we fed them and we said, hey. It was just a great sort of relationship how they toughed it out, came. It was a good part of the piece. So I don't want, I don't want to overdo my piece of the puzzle. I'm, I'm not a small piece of, we're not a small piece of the puzzle, but we're a good-sized piece of the puzzle. The bigger piece is what these guys are going to explain here, much more so. But I think it's fair to say, and I, that this can become an essential piece of a student's education and a big piece of their identity and a strength of who they are. And we have a great center. We have great teachers, great students. And it reflects, I didn't show you our numbers, but over the past 10 years, enrollments in the school we serve has gone down 15%, and enrollments up 35%. So it's a drastic shift and it reflects a lot of hard work around the pedagogical side of things, as well as the career pathway side of things. So I won't be here to answer questions. Mr. Herbert's told me, told me today that he can answer any question now for me. So he's going to have his little phone. So if you ask a question, he's going to text me. And I'll text him right back and he can answer you. Maybe he can do a couple of questions. And what I hand out to is our brochure also. That's our promotional brochure. It sort of tells our story. So I just figured I'd grab this short talk, but something you can take home and look at and then piece together and sort of figure out what we are.
And I would just add to what Steve said, as a relative outsider at the high school, it's impressive to see the diversity of kids to their respective programs. And they're all walking around with, you know, with their t-shirts and jackets and ones in the city of their programs. They, I don't think those guys miss a day of those classes. And the other thing that Steve alluded to, and I'm going to talk a little bit about later on, is this idea of pathways. Our hope is for all of our kids, when they graduate, and Steve alluded to this, that they have a clear direction. I mean, we're not under no illusion that every kid's going to have everything nailed down when we hand them a diploma at the end of four years. But if they have a pretty good idea of what direction they want to go in and the steps they need to go in their journey, then we've done our job. And that's what we're going towards at the school overall. These guys have been vying out of that for quite a while. Any questions you have for Steve before he, I don't think he's really going anywhere.
I can speak, I will go speak until 6:30, so.
So I guess my question more is sort of alluded to some pedagogical, some changes in the system over your 10, 13 years that you've been there. And I don't know that getting into all sort of the fundamentals of how that's happened is necessarily, you have time for that, but I would be curious. But my question more is, in terms of some sort of a metric, like looking at percentage of student volume at Concord High School, how many of them are involved in the CRTC program? Do you not feel like you've seen over the last 10 years a change in that number? Has it stayed pretty standard?
Yeah, so when I started Concord High, there were almost 2,100 kids at Concord High School, about 250 kids in the center. Now there's about 1,600 kids at Concord High School and still 250 kids in the center. So I call it our penetration rate. That's the number I use because I look at the sort of population we have. So our penetration rate, aside from COVID, this year's an aberration because we lost some kids. But every year up to this year, our penetration rate in every school we serve is going up. So what it means is as the enrollment went, we would have to increase our enrollment as the enrollment in schools went down. And we've done that successfully for a long time now. And I think it just reflects the change in mindset, you know? So if you look at Concord High, you know, our target, our target population mostly sophomores and, I mean, sorry, juniors and seniors. And so if you took our basic number out of that piece, you know, about a third, whatever, three kids, a little more than one, maybe 35, 36% kids do it. And that's been pretty steady for the past stretch of time. So, you know, one in three, sometimes up to 40%. It just really depends on that, that year, what turns out. Interestingly enough, some schools we serve, like Marinac Valley, they send us like 120, 130 kids. Just remarkable how many kids are coming. They actually changed the number of teachers they have in their school because of us. So, you know, we're an enterprise. It is a fundamentally different model in high school. You know, we have to sort of create a value proposition that's going to survive. So the value proposition is two-sided. One is the career pathway piece of it, and second is the quality pedagogy. And quality pedagogy taught by a teacher who has 20 years in the field. That field, not the teaching field, but their experience there. So, you know, I just reiterate, you know, as you hear, and I blew my, the first part of my talk, being in a creative technical high school, I used to go to a creative technical center, is a humongous advantage. I mean, I don't want to, I, Steve's just doing like studies. How many kids don't want to take a bus? But when it's there, it's there and it's part of who they are. It's just, you know, the challenge for me is making sure we have a valid value proposition that people, people want to act on.
And to follow up, sorry to your point there, I think you mentioned again the idea that having it in the building is incredibly convenient. How many students maybe take one program or class versus two versus three? Is it timely?
No, it's one. In my entire career, I think I've had three kids have taken more than one. So it's, it's mostly, well, I said, it's a two-year, a class is a two-year commitment. You've got to earn your way to the second year. Some people do one-on-one because they find it didn't like the first, they do a change. But by and large, you're doing two years of the same thing or one-on-one. But you're not taking two different programs. Yes?
I heard you talking about the commitment and the engagement. And I have the privilege of spending my last three years in a career tech center. So it's fantastic. And, but I was curious to know if you knew on like a regional level, where, where you thinking, has anybody been talking about? Because it is such a more of a, a process-oriented type of instruction. Is there any thought of bringing that into freshman and sophomore year?
Yeah. I think that, so first of all, we do serve a few sophomores. So what we targeted a couple of years back was, we have a program called CRTC Plus. And so CRTC Plus is a program called Third Year. And so if you start as a sophomore, I personally help craft plans for about 12 and 13 kids right now who took the third year and are doing now deeper dives into work-based learning or deeper dives going to creative college. So we have students, some kids even the second year to do it, the seniors. We have a couple of students now learning anywhere from nine to 12 to 20 credits at Manchester Community College or HDI as part of the high school program. So basically, I don't want to work with them, call them full-time students. So some of them still do football or basketball, do whatever they want to do. But they're full-time students, going to community college, doing this piece. So getting down to the freshman level is hard for creative technical education. Some schools have an orientation program. We get a taste of them all. We're so maxed out that we don't have capacity to do that. So it would be something we'd love to do. My framework is slightly different. My framework, long-term, in helping the school think about it, and I think Mike agrees. We want to get kids out with experience in the freshman year to see businesses and see people working, to see the context of their learning, what's going on. It's tough for us about programming freshmen right now based on our capacity.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I went too long. I always go too long. Okay.
So with your programming, having limited capacity, is there times when, how many students are waitlisted or not, you know, to participate? How does that affect our students?
So it affects all students equally. So it doesn't affect one or the other. So it really depends on the program. Like right now, we're over-enrolled in our construction program, our criminal justice program, and our education and behavioral science program. So each of those programs are basically 50% higher enrollment capacity. It's spread out. It's not any one town. It's not any one group. And we have to look at students' records, their behavior, their, all the things we look at. Essays they write, you know, you have to apply to come to, to create essays saying what we're thinking about. We do the best we can to get the best map. So sometimes there's groupings of courses. So a kid who wants construction, a lot of times their second choice is auto tech. You know, some areas, some people want health, their second choice is education, behavioral science. And sometimes we can sort of move them into a parallel career. But I can say that a good chunk get in and a few students get waivers. And that date, I don't have at my fingertips right this second. I can get it to you. Pretty thorough, pretty thorough, you can see it. So I'm crafting all the time. I'm, I'm taking a student, saying, look, you know, we can't do this B now. How about this? And next year, come and do that. We always try to work it.
Has Concord looked at increasing, I mean, I find, you know, technical schools to be a huge asset because there's a lot of kids at colleges of the right path and they need something different, right?
Let me pause in that. That's the approach, that's not the approach. I want to make it clear. More, higher percentage of kids in creative technical than in college and non-creative technical. The approach is, I mean, as respectfully, is it's how you approach your education. That's the difference. I think that's, that's the subtlety of this discussion. I mean, we have a huge number of kids off the charts going to college, boy or college, as you name it. But they're going there with a sense of purpose because they've developed things in the high school program in which they go.
Right. Now, has Concord looked at expanding your footprint or expanding, giving you the tools you need to expand your program? Or is that going to be eliminating?
I'm looking at the superintendent. The superintendent did bring that up to me the other day. And I think that we are more than willing to grow, growing's really hard. That's, that's my answer to you. Because it's heavy, facility-intensive, personnel-intensive, but we have things, and we have things to offer. Because we do surveys every year of what students think about for the future. So we have all this data over the past 10 years. And there's programs like biomedicine that people are interested in. Interested in vet tech, that's a big one. And we keep looking at these things and exploring how to offer additional things. Sometimes we explore offerings that are off-site. Like you might have been at Concord. So in my 10-year, we started cosmetology, theater and film, and emergency services. We started those over the past few years. And that pace, I'm sure, will continue. We just have to figure out that pathway. So you have to do it through a long, solid process of advisory on these. Is there a program in your mind?
More curiosity question than anything else. When I say you're at your limit, it makes me wonder what the next step is to increase. If the demand is there, how do you, how do you guys plan to accommodate?
A good example is, and Mr. Herbert can jump in on this one, is business is a good example. But business is not under a creative technical education right now. It needs to have a pathway more often. It needs to have a sort of different approach. So one is new, but two is innovating within. And I think both avenues are. You know, you could have a business program where you earn 12 credits from MCC over your high school scheme, good taste, very busy track. Come out of high school with 12, 15 credits, graduate with a business program and really line it all up.
I think I would hold up on the question. I mean, you sure.
I think he wants me to get out of here too, so I got to the show.
Can you just talk a little bit about, you know, the ELOs?
Yeah, so they're front-loading me today. I should have just. So I think, think about this sort of grouping of ideas. One is creative technical education, and the second is extended learning opportunities. I've been less than, that opportunity is sort of framed after the high school. And it's a, it's a system, right? Sometimes Commissioner of Education talks about it like you can go like this and kids are on the field. It's just the complete opposite of that. It's highly structured. You've got to think about how it's all going to work, safety of students, all the factors to it. So we have this year 60%, next year 100% personally dedicated to working with students to create experiences that are not in the program studies. We frame them three ways. Like, career exploration is one of them. Community service is another one. A huge one is called fixed experiences. I want to take a class at NHDI. I want to get my EMT license. You know, something where you go somewhere, self-contained, you complete it, you bring a grad proof, and it's done. And the fourth one is one that lessons don't do, which is this concept of make your own program. And that requires a huge amount of capacity. But COVID sort of put the brakes on it a little bit. It's hard, obviously, to get kids out of the building. But at the same time, district committed to the person who's our ELO coordinator is terrific. Going from 60% position to 100% position next year. So a lot of kids are interested. And we have, like today, we did one, a student, actually, two students did veterinary ones. They, vets are a big popular thing. So we recorded their presentation and then it becomes part of our law law about how to do this. And once someone sees, wait, you did this great experience, keep a log, do this final presentation. And the students can't stop talking in the presentation. They're talking about all the things they did at the vet tech or whatever, the vet. So it's just a growing area. It matches beautifully with the sort of larger concept of sort of finding yourself, like developing, leveraging your English class, leveraging your math, all those pieces and sort of finding your pathway. The ELOs basically say, hey, let's write the book. What do you want to do?
Even the new placement of our office, I think.
Yeah, we, Mike was right. We have a fishbowl office dead center of the building and it was being used by people who were really messy for a while. And I was like, Mike, those guys get out of there. And then we put in this office. Unfortunately, COVID hit, so people don't walk by as much. But next year will be terrific, which is all glass. And there's videos outside showing, hey, walk in this room. You got a thought about, you know, I had a girlfriend, Elizabeth Moreno, for example, who's a Deerfield kid who does horse, you know? Walk in the room and we're going to, we're going to help you figure out a game plan on how to make this work. Again, it's, it's, I'm looping why we're here today. This is the power of big high school, you know? It is something for everybody. And, you know, it's our approach to what we do. It's exciting. Now it'll start. You don't want me to go first. You go last.
We don't watch you anymore, so. You're totally fine. Any other questions for Steve?
Thanks for your time. I have a couple more minutes, but I, unfortunately, I have to go.
Okay, so if it's okay with you guys, we are going to kind of walk you through what's going on at the high school overall. Kind of take a chronological approach to this. Just to give you an idea of the stuff that we're emphasizing. This year has been, I may have heard, a little difficult in all the papers. But we've continued to move forward. We've, I've been saying around, waiting for this to go away. Well, we've been waiting for it to go away, but we've been, we've been moving forward as we, as we go along. So here are some things that are going on this, that have happened this year. We changed our grading scheme from numerical to a bunch of forces. Now, this is not revolutionary among high schools. But what I want to explain to you, and I think it was not easy to get this done. And I'm not going to go over that, but I want to explain to you why we did it. So we're, as I will talk about later on, we're a competency-based school. Well, all high schools in the interest of speech, to some extent, but we're pretty serious about it. And we're looking at kids defining their competency through doing things like multi-tiered projects, presentations, debates, writing assignments. And if you think about the nature of any of those types of assessments, they do not lend themselves to a numerical grade. You can't, if you're, if you're giving a presentation in class or in public or you're doing a writing assignment, let's take something as fundamental to education as a writing assignment. If you're doing a critical analysis of a poem or a short story, you can't realistically give that an 88. The mental processes, the different factors about how you marshal evidence to support your thesis, the persuasiveness of your writing, all of that stuff[1711.99] uh, the persuasiveness of your writing, all of that stuff lends itself to a performance. And, and that was really the impetus for us, for doing this. Um, I think it was kind of difficult for a lot of folks in the community who obviously, like all of us, are used to a numerical grade, uh, to accept that. But we've had it in place for a year. Our kids who come up, uh, through the Concord system, through the elementary and middle school systems, uh, systems, schools, um, are used to this. So we now have consistency, consistency, consistency throughout the K through 12, uh, system. And we've also put in this year, and I remember talking about this as we did it last summer, uh, a new, uh, grading program. The reason we did that was again, not to put in a new grading program. The reason we, we took up teacherries is because we felt it, it told a story. And, um, again, if you think about it, the only reason that we give grades at all are, so it tells kids and families a story about what this student has done to get to this point in their attempts to, um, uh, master competencies that make up any given class. So, um, we've had that in place this year. We've, we've met, uh, a lot of challenges as we've done that. Um, Kathleen Chaloskis has, uh, really been our leader in, in implementing that. And she's been working with, um, teacher groups about changes and revisions that we're going to make to teacherries as we go into next year. Uh, so this is pretty important stuff, because this is what your parents in Deerfield see about progress for the kids. So I'm just going to ask Kathleen just to talk a little bit about where that, where that work is right now.
Yeah, and our moving forward and using one to four actually aligns better with what Deerfield is using. Um, I was actually working with a Deerfield father and son today and reviewing his report cards from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And he has one through four on his report card. So actually, the consistency there has been nice for us to be able to look at, to be able to go back and see how the child, whether making progress or not making progress once he comes to Concord High School. So that's a nice transition. Um, but no grading and reporting system is perfect. Zero to 100 is not perfect, and one to four is not perfect. Um, but we want to make sure that we're telling the story well, and that families and students know how they're doing and can talk about how they're doing and how they might need to improve. Um, and so what I'll share with you is that as far as moving forward, um, our program and how we calculate our scores and how we report them, um, can always be improved, knowing we need better. And so that's what we're looking at, um, moving forward. Um, maintaining a one to four system, but how do we better improve that system in, in reporting to families how they're doing? Um, is it clear? Do parents know how to access all of this information? Can parents make sense of it? Um, obviously is one of our most important pieces, so. Um, but what's really exciting is that it actually does align with what Deerfield's doing for its students here, so.
So, you know, our goal is simply to make those, um, those different, um, tools, one through four, teacherries program, more accessible to parents and kids and do a better job of reflecting the work that they're doing. It's not a matter of just putting a, a grading system and forgetting about it. The next grouping that you see are all around, um, not dissimilar to COVID issues, around racial sensitivity issues. So, uh, under Kathleen's leadership, uh, the district has done a lot of work this year on equity training. And, um, I'm sure it's one of the more horses in education now, the distinction between equality and equity. But the idea is simply that we, for all kids, uh, that rather than treat, treat them all the same, we want to make sure that we're giving them what they need to succeed. And so we've been meeting, I think we're meeting now twice a month at least on these issues, uh, with varying degrees of success. But it's been something that's, we're taking seriously in the district, because it's going to help us to serve our kids better. Um, the third, the third bullet, and that's second grouping around diversity and hiring. So as Steve alluded, we've got, uh, almost 2,000 kids in the building. And, uh, we've basically, no, it's not basically, it's literally, we have no teachers of color in the building, uh, which is kind of stunning when you think about it. Um, we just hired a new school resource officer. Ours is being promoted to, um, detective. And he is a, uh, a, a young man of color. And it's a fact, an immigrant from Ghana and grew up in Lawrence and has quite a story, they told us in his interview. And I think he's going to be great in helping us to make more connections with some of our students. Um, but we are, um, again, with Captain's help and Larry Prince, our personnel HR person, really being pretty aggressive about trying to locate, um, uh, teachers of color that, that will be more reflective of our student body in the school. It's an important thing for us. Um, I also mentioned a, a black student living there. Um, this was, this came into being this year. It was, uh, under the impetus of one of our students. Um, and it's a terrific service organization. And Tim, and Tim Herbert oversees our co-curriculars, our clubs and organizations. And I just asked you to talk about what they do a whole.
They, they have a mission that they want to bring about equity and change through education, that education equals opportunity. And by educating, um, masses about, you know, uh, diversity, celebrating diversity, getting into elementary schools, working with elementary kids, building their confidence and stuff, and teaching them that, you know, you may be different, you may look different, your hair may be different, your skin color may be different, but that's okay. We should be celebrated for who we are. So they have a, a very positive mission of, let's make a, a, which change our community through educational means. And, uh, one thing they did right around, um, uh, the beginning of February, which was, uh, National, uh, uh, what is it? Life History Month. They, uh, did a bunch of recordings of the children's book, uh, that support diversity. Uh, one, uh, saw bee, or another one's, uh, uh, hair. It, it's just great, it's about different styles of hair that, uh, did, uh, different, uh, people of culture, uh, people of color have. And, uh, as well as, um, yeah, what was another book? I'm trying to think of, but nonetheless, they read some was around 12, a dozen different books celebrating diversity and did recordings, and we shared them out with not only elementary schools in, uh, Concord, but Kristen. Did, did we share those with you and Brian as well, or did we just share the posters?
Just the posters, which we did use.
Just the posters. So, um, it, it's community service based and it's about forming connections with young students, uh, and trying to teach them to celebrate diversity, who they are, and just really, really, you know, have that confidence, build that confidence and be in, it's an educational mission, so.
Yep. These things that we're talking about here, uh, really come under the heading of a sense of belonging to a school. Um, and we're going to talk about that, some other context in a minute. But, um, I think there's a few things that are more important than when, when a young man or woman from Deerfield or from Concord walks into that building, that they feel they belong there, that they're recognized, that, uh, that people care about who they are and know their story and want to support them. And kids need support more than ever after the year that they've been through. So, um, all this stuff and this whole grouping here is, is pretty important to our success as a school and to our kids' identity. This next group is, uh, uh, pretty exciting. Uh, and I'm going to talk about it in two different ways. Are you guys pretty familiar with this, with Concord High? Have you been around the building? Well, it's divided into three columns, um, A, B, and D. There used to be a C, but, uh, that's not, uh, extent anymore. So these, each of these, uh, each of these areas, there's, there's an assistant principal. There are, you know, offices with two guidance counselors and a program assistant and that type of stuff. But then there's a large, quite large, uh, area room next to each cafeteria. Um, and up until a couple of months ago, each of those areas was filled with, uh, rusty old lockers. I don't know, I mean, how old were those things, Kathleen?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six. They were pretty ugly.
I think they were actually, we restored from like, it's painted.
I, 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 I think I found a couple of ham sandwiches in some of them as, as they were being pulled out. Uh, but, so, uh, we were able to get all of that stuff taken out of there. Because it was, it wasn't a casual thing, it was, we needed that space, because kids obviously need to be distanced during lunch and so forth. So once we got that stuff out, we were able to, to, to use it in a very, um, uh, needful way to make sure the kids had room to sit safely at lunch and, and for studies and all, and, and all the rest of that stuff. Um, so what's more interesting, and I'm just going to save this for our next year segment as we get down to bottom here, is what we're looking towards doing with that stuff in the future. We'll get to that in a minute. I did want to mention that both our boys cross country and our, uh, boys hockey team are state champions this year. Um, and I'll also say paraphetically, folks, um, the Concord High School athletic programs, as you probably will, we are, are apparently very successful. But above and beyond that, um, we have a terrific, uh, co-curricular program. I mean, we, we have all kinds of, uh, of things, you know, and, and which is as a tribute, because kids, you know, all, every kid's not going to just be in the National Honor Society or, uh, in, in, um, the leadership of their class. I mean, we, we have a broad spectrum of, um, you know, like a robotics program, which is first rate. I'm going to talk about that in a few minutes. Um, we have, we have the, uh, Bigfoot Club, which is, uh, headed up by a radical teacher and his radical students who insist that, uh, Bigfoot is real. And they've been, they've been meet regularly to, uh, kind of reinforce that with, with each other. But the real point I want to make is that, uh, when you think about your students in relation to Concord High School, and this is kind of an old song as well, but I think it bears repeating, is that 30 years ago, uh, we used to call, uh, sports and clubs, uh, extracurricular activities. And somebody had the, uh, insight to realize that you can learn as much in a club or on a football field or volleyball court as you can in the classroom. You're learning different types of stuff, but it's no less important. And that's why I call them co-curriculars. So, um, uh, we have, uh, as I said, a, a wide and varied program, not just athletics, but clubs and organizations, uh, left and right, and, and that's an important part of the program as well. Um, this year we're going to, uh, give a cultural climate survey, uh, for our staff. And that's something we tend to do every year. Now, uh, why am I pointing this out? Uh, I think I might have mentioned a couple of minutes ago, it's been a somewhat difficult year. It's certainly a difficult year for our kids, uh, and a very difficult year for our teachers. They have done, uh, and I'm sure this is true in, in Pembroke, uh, as, as well as, as here at Deerfield. You know, Yelman work in, in dealing with, uh, kids who were in person when we were hybrid and kids, uh, uh, coming in remotely, uh, just trying to keep things moving forward, trying to keep kids engaged. Um, uh, it's been exhausting for them. Uh, but, uh, you know, I, as I said, I haven't been here for a long time, uh, in Concord. Uh, but, uh, it's quite a group of teachers at that high school. And I, I'm, I'm going to speak frankly, why not? Um, you know, when I was at PA for a long time, we had some terrific teachers at P A. And people like Jeannie Johnson. And I'm not, I'm not starting naming names, but they were outstanding. But I have never, ever seen as many per capita outstanding teachers, right, as the, as there are at Concord High School. And they really came up to the mark this year. But it has been a, a trying time for us all. And so we thought it's important, as we get to the end of the year, to give them a chance to reflect and respond, uh, to a lot of issues, uh, about how they feel, uh, especially in, in terms of being supported in the school. Um, and that's something that comes back to be, uh, uh, about the direction of the school. And, and all those issues of making their, making their voice heard. It's, it, you know, making teachers' voices heard and, and listening to those voices is the same as, as for kids. Um, it's really important that we do that. Uh, as, as leadership, we have to lead and we have to make decisions. But we have to do that in, uh, in conjunction with, uh, with the community that we work. And, and, and that's going to be a tool that we're using going forward. Um, and just a couple of, uh, small things at the bottom, but, uh, uh, kind of cool things. We, uh, this is something we actually did at PA over the years. We just, uh, started this year with a couple of departments. They have, uh, uh, large, uh, signs out in the hallway, uh, in, um, uh, social studies and mathematics about, uh, that captures the, um, the nature and the flavor of their particular discipline. And we're kind of going, over the years, we've been going around the school and making sure that every department has a chance to do that. And also, if you think about, uh, if you've been to the school in, on Main Street, um, that large, um, area, uh, up in that, and, and that's where Steve was talking about the, um, ELO office, that's where that's located right now. It's a really kind of a cool place up there, but it's also empty. I mean, kids pass, you know, hundreds of kids pass through there all day, but there's really not a lot up there in terms of the actual, uh, the very wide corridor that makes up Main Street. And, um, so what we're going to be doing in, in about a week or two, because we have them ready to go, is we're putting in a, uh, an art gallery up there. And I know you're thinking, it's student art, but it's not student art, it's student-selected art. And what they, what they've done, this was under the leadership of Jeff Fulop, one of our art teachers, is his students, uh, did some research and they all had the opportunity to choose a painting that they thought was, uh, worthy of being, uh, uh, in, in our little Main Street art gallery. And, um, you know, we did, I was able to get a $3,000 grant. So we got, uh, Jeff knows how to frame the pictures. So he has, they're nicely framed, they have UV glass, they look terrific. And, um, the kids have done the research, uh, so they're going to have little explanations, along with the artist and the year or the title of the painting, some explanations of why they chose it. We're going to have nice seating around it. It'll be a, a, a nice little cultural oasis up on, uh, on Main Street. So I hope you'll, maybe if we can meet at next year to do this, maybe you can come over to the high school and we can, we can meet up there and, and see the art gallery. So, um, this summer, uh, I'll say for the third or fourth time, it's been a heck of a year. And our kids, a lot of our kids have struggled academically. I want to be, again, frank and transparent about that. Um, some kids have been absolutely blown away, uh, by the disconnection and, uh, isolation that they've experienced. And we're going to approach that in a lot of different ways. SEL plus, I hate, uh, social and emotional learning being in the forefront of that. We've done a lot of that this year. Um, but academics are always in the mainstream. So this summer, we're going to have a pretty, uh, robust, uh, program. And, uh, we just asked again, Kathleen to talk a little bit about, uh, what we're going to be offering.
I will, I will talk quickly so we can try to get any questions they might have in. I, I think the, the best way we can talk about summer, um, and this does involve Deerfield as well, is that we're open, school is open. Um, we're going to run a variety of programs to meet the needs of students. Um, we did last summer and we plan to again this summer. Um, everything from competency recovery, so if a student is close enough, um, but didn't meet some competencies, they can be involved in competency recovery for those classes. Um, for some students who this year really hit them hard, uh, there will be some programs where they can earn new credit. Um, and actually, um, in, in cooperation with CRCC, where they might be involved in an integrated program that involves culinary, the science of food, mathematics involved in food, and then maybe looking at food reviews and writing them and reading them and, um, having some integrated new curriculum that might, um, engage them again. Um, freshman orientations, um, that are lengthy and an opportunity for incoming Deerfield ninth graders. Um, they wouldn't get, be able to be, um, exposed and experience Concord High School for a three-day session this summer. We're going to run four different sessions, so families have the ability to choose. Um, and then a program towards the end of summer, um, for current students who really could use some support in just understanding their own academic and social and emotional needs , um, towards the end of the summer. Uh, I just want to say that we have been, um, we've worked hard this year, more so than ever. Um, I've been at Concord High School a long time, and I know sometimes the transportation piece with Deerfield has been a challenge for some of these things. Um, but we've worked with Dale Transportation, um, to ensure that all this year, when students have needed to get from Deerfield to Concord, they've been able to get there, um, even if we were closed per se and they needed to be there. And we hope to do that this summer as well, so that the students will have access to these summer programs as well, um, as students at Concord High, which has really been, really been, um, a step in the right direction in making sure that everybody has access. I know that's been a challenge in the past with summer programming, but, um, we've been working really hard to make that happen.
Thanks, Scott. Um, next year, uh, see, these, these are some, uh, very important things. We are going to be instituting daily advisory. When I got to Concord, uh, a year and a half ago, um, they had a weekly advisory, which I guess is better than nothing, but it really, especially going, uh, coming out of the pandemic. The idea of that, that community being at standard, ideally over four years with the same kids, the same advisor, uh, again, a way, a tool of making sure that every student in the school, uh, is known by at least one adult. Um, and by the known, I mean, uh, someone who knows their story, knows their background, um, has their trust. Uh, you know, ideally, there, there are 20 adults in the building, and for many kids there are. But, um, you know, you always worry about the kids who slip through the cracks or somehow were made anonymous. And the larger the high school, the more possible, possible that is. So that's going to be an important, uh, undertaking for us. And kind of in conjunction with that. And kind of in conjunction with that, we have started our work on a restorative justice program, which is part of our multi-tiered systems of support. This is a major undertaking for the school. And again, it's part of community building. We're looking at this program called Circle Forward, or essentially, I don't know why I'm talking about this. Tim, what?
No problem. So the multi-tiered system of supports are proactive solutions to support our students in any range of needs, from academic, social, emotional, to behavioral. So what we've done is incorporate our restorative justice across three tiers of MTSS. Circle Forward being a universal tier, it's a proactive approach that can be built into the classroom structure for teachers to form positive relationships with students. And research has shown through the positive adult relationships in school, the likelihood of a disruption in the classroom, class cut, tardy to school, et cetera, et cetera, drops substantially. Ninety-three percent of the discipline at Concord High School are in those three categories. So if you have a research-based strategy that can help you reduce ninety-three percent of your discipline, that's terrific. So we began the training on that this year, the entire administrative team have gone through it. A number of teachers, school counselors, et cetera, have gone through it. And this will be ongoing into next year, training through all three different tiers of restorative justice and proactive solutions. And it's part of our, you know, multi-tiered system of supports. We also have the, we're going to have a student mediation council that will also follow the Circle Forward process that will be overseen by a trained restorative justice facilitator adult in our school that will assist students with low-level mediation pieces that maybe doesn't have to rise to a school counselor or to an administrator that can be dealt with amongst students. So we're looking at trying to train between now and next November, twenty students between freshmen to seniors in Circle Forward, the universal poster of restorative justice.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting stuff.
It'd be worth it for us to come with MTSS team and do a presentation of the wide scope of MTSS at another time.
Yeah. And then we've had throughout this year, in fact, it was one of the first things that I did when I got to Concord. And I did it because I listened to what the faculty had to say. They were concerned about kids having unoccupied time, too much, too many open periods during the day. I knew that we needed to put in an advisory, a daily advisory. So we formed a teacher research committee around the master schedule. Obviously, this year has put a wrench into any huge changes that we want to make. But that committee's continued to work. We are going to make a decision about whether we're going to stay with a skinny day on Friday. I think we're probably going to get away from that. We will remain next year in an eight-period day, so it's not going to be a huge change in the schedule. We will have the advisory every day. But I think we're going to be looking a little bit more creatively beyond that. But that, I think it's worth noting, that committee has continued to be, throughout a very difficult year, continued to work on that very important subject. A master schedule is a platform for a school. Okay, let's talk a little bit about the rededication of these commons areas. About a week ago, I had Kathleen and Donna Calley, Assistant Superintendent, Jack Dunn, our financial guy, and Matt Cashman, our facilities guy, over for a tour of the facilities. And we presented them with what our vision is for each of those large commons areas that have now been cleared out. And they look beautiful, by the way. I mean, big, great big windows all around. So very briefly, I know we want to get to your questions. The Commons A, which is right down the hall from the main office as you come in, that would ideally have a welcome center in it, have the electronics and so forth for presentations. The other side of the Commons would be a senior lounge. Now, I know you're sitting there and saying, how important can a senior lounge be? Well, it's not the end of the world, I'm not suggesting that. But a senior lounge is one of those tools that I think forward-thinking schools use as a way of creating that sense of belonging. You're as a senior, you have a place dedicated to you where you can, without supervision, sit and talk to your friends if you've got the open time, and just a place to be that's special. And the underclassmen have something to aspire to as they grow up through the grades. They have kind of a special area that they can go. And I think those little things, again, create that sense of community, that sense of belonging that's so integral to a successful school. Up in Commons B, this is our main priority. We would like to see a fully-equipped STEM lab up there, a maker's space. So I talked to you earlier in this presentation about how important it is in terms of our assessments to have kids doing projects and presentations and all that type of thing. Well, a lot of the projects right now involve, you know, things like glue guns and cardboard. And we want to up that substantially, so that kids can do pretty sophisticated projects in a space like that. We would be adding different tools and different equipment over time. You know, big butcher block tables where kids can congregate and collaborate and work on stuff together. So we think that this is a pretty important, and in spite of its cost, which is considerable for a fully-equipped STEM lab, pretty essential part of a modern high school. So I'm calling Kathleen up six or seven times a day to see if she has a check ready of some of your STEM projects.
I bought a ticket to my mother's.
And then down in Commons D, we, we're going to move our robotics lab down there. Now it's up in our professional library. What used to be a professional library has now been decimated by the robotics team. But we're going to move them down to Commons D. Nice glassed-in space on both sides, so kids can see, other kids can kind of see the work that's going on in there. And the other half of that Commons is going to be an area both for our, an extended place for art projects, like sculpt, big things like sculpture and so forth, but also a space that our other co-curricular clubs can use. So we've got, you know, we've got a vision for, there is, interestingly, a lot of open space at the high school. There's a workroom up at the fourth floor of the West Building that is absolutely beautiful. And it's the nicest room on campus, but we're going to kind of leave that open, so we have that space available. One of the things we really want to work on for next year is our departmental websites. And I, again, in being frank and honest with you, this is, this is, came to my mind after two new guidance counselors, first here in the building, without anybody saying anything to them, did a complete revamp of our guidance website. And it was stunning what they did with it, how they focused it, how they made it look great. And one of the things we want to do is have all our departments kind of go through that and make that a real resource for families and for kids. And the last thing I want to do next year is put and start the Concord High School Wall of Fame. This would be, you remember our art gallery at one end of Main Street? This would be the other end of Main Street. So the idea would be that we would have inducting one living and one deceased Concord High School graduate every year. Some of the names, that, is it Judge Souter? Yeah, Judge Souter was a Concord High School Supreme Court, retired Supreme Court Justice. Obviously, Christopher Coliff. But there's all kinds of very impressive graduates over the years from CHS. And again, the idea, if I, forgive the broken record, is that when kids, so kids walk through Main Street and they look up and say, you know, there's a Supreme Court Justice, there's an astronaut, you know, there's a famous politician that's not in jail. And so, you know, they look, they, I just want to see if you paid attention. And so they have a sense of continuity, that sense of belonging, that sense of aspiration within that building. So, you know, on the one hand, you say, okay, it's not a really important thing, it's not. But it's something, it's a tool to create a certain sense of community and a sense of belonging. So that brings me to the most important, and I'm not going to take too much more time, I know we're going to move on. But I did want to talk a little bit about competency-based education, CBE. I mentioned earlier that, you know, all schools were required by the state legislature to, I don't even know what year it was. Jimbo, you remember, we had to do?
Nine. I think it was eight or nine.
Yeah, had to do basic courses upon competencies. We've taken this whole thing very seriously. We believe that all kids learn at different rates. We believe that transparency about knowing what it is you're expected to learn, perhaps needing multiple chances to show that you've mastered the material is important. You know, giving kids rubrics, giving kids exemplars, so that they can see, especially if it's around things like writing assignments. You know, if you're talking about, if you're talking about doing the odd number of questions at the end of chapter, this doesn't work. If you're talking about doing relatively complex assignments, then it's a all-different deal. You want to have a sense of what it is, what is it that my teacher is asking me to do? Well, here's some examples from last year that kids did, how they set up their projects and so forth. So that's something that we have bought into as a school. Our faculty is in different places, some science department's been doing this thing for about fifteen years. Other departments are at different places in their evolution with this. We dedicated a full workshop day this year to, in fact, we have Chris Mottica as our keynote at Patty, as I'm sure you're aware, for that day, he's terrific. And we want to keep working with him a little bit next year as well. But I've listed below some of the key components of CBE that we want to work towards as we go forward. That idea of pathways, that kids have a sense, when they graduate, of where they're going and how they're going to get there. The idea of transferable skills, that your understanding, conceptual understanding of competencies, your mastery of skills in a particular course are not something that's limited to the classroom, that you can apply those things outside of the classroom. That's where ELOs come in, for example. Project-based learning, we talked about, extended learning opportunities, we talked about. Depth of knowledge, it's a huge issue, it's kind of a complex issue. If, I was, if I, when I had to work for a living, I was an English teacher. And so if I was teaching kids about sonnets, you know, a level-one DOK would be, you can say, a sonnet is a closed form of poetry, has fourteen lines of iambic pentameter with an intricate rhymes scheme. So you can memorize that. That's a pretty low depth of knowledge achievement. So maybe level two would be, the student can look at an actual sonnet and point out those characteristics and how they work in a sonnet. Level three would be, they can do an analytical essay, a critical essay in a sonnet, and come up with a thesis and defend it based upon the different components of that. And level four, level four might be the kid writes a sonnet. So, you know, we're struggling with now, for example, if a teacher gives a DOK, gives an assessment, a DOK one, and the kid has a four on it, he thinks, well, I'm good to go. I've got a four and I mastered this, but of course, they haven't really gotten to the complex, complex work. So we're kind of working on and dealing with those issues now. And one thing that we would like to work towards is an idea of a capstone project where every student has a graduation requirement on his, her, or her own, defines a project, a worthy project, does the research, prepares a presentation, gives a presentation in public, and answers questions on it. As a rite of passage from being a student in school to being a member of a community that you can do. And this isn't about, I always say, you know, we're talking about kids doing, you know, talking about, you know, what's the role of women in the novels of Henry James? If somebody wants to do that, they can knock themselves out. But we want them, again, to go back to their pathways model, to embrace their passion, do stuff around that. If they're interested in automotive or construction or whatever it is, there are a million different great topics that they could research around those types of things. So that's something that we'd like to work, work towards. And finally, I just wanted to remind you that we will have our prom this year on the seventeenth. The prom will be at the high school, the leadership, just seniors, seniors only this year, no outside guests. Our senior leadership has done a great job of preparing a plan for that to keep kids safe. It's going to be a wonderful night for them. And then two days later, we will be graduating in a single ceremony. Not three weeks last year, just one ceremony on Memorial Field at ten o'clock, and it will not rain. Questions?
Hey, go ahead. Thank you, a lot of good information that I just hear for us, I appreciate that. You're, you talked about a few different sort of aspects of your program. For instance, you know, the department websites and how, taking another look at the departments and what their websites represent. The capstone project, the changing of the grading system from a zero to hundred to one to four. And when I think about also sort of what competency-based education also entails, it's sort of those to me are a little bit on the, a little bit on the perimeter. It's sort of like what's happening in the classroom, you know, what's happening in terms of how the departments are sort of unified towards a narrative like you're describing. Like are our departments unified, working towards the same then, and kind of carrying these sort of common themes going through? You also talked about having students having more agency in the form of an ELO. Having those kind of married is a very sort of difficult thing that I think schools are wrestling with right now around the state. And how do you have, give students agency while at the same time having kind of a unified, you know, departmental sort of vision? And once you achieve that, that leads to, you know, a website that makes sense, that leads to a capstone project that's unified, that leads to grading systems that then say what you're trying to say here. My question is, it sounds like you have a plan in place. Another piece of your picture is the culture and climate survey. That can be a difficult lift for teachers to wrestle with. Are you, are you ready for sort of a couple of years, maybe, as you dig into this work, that the culture and climate might suffer, or do you feel like you've got a plan for how to bring everything together and maintain sort of a positive culture component?
So here's the thing, I'm glad you're all sitting down. Change is not easy. So Kathleen and I are both kind of in the same boat, we kind of came into the district. It would be easy for, just, you know, just to sit around and have a cup of coffee every day and, you know, just wait for my paycheck to come in. But I don't think, first of all, these guys would not let me do that.
No, no, no. Not a couple.
So, you know, we have to move forward. So your question, one of the aspects of your question is, where are departments? Departments are, not surprisingly, in different places. In fact, let's just take, take a few minutes and let's talk about this. Jimbo, why don't you talk about one of your departments, why don't you each take two minutes to talk about one of your departments?
Yeah, so I supervise our social studies department, world language, art, and music. In our social studies department, it has been working with competencies going back probably. In our social studies department, it has been working with competencies going back probably since science, probably 15 years or so. We've really made some transitions though, within the social studies department, from the competencies that were very content-based. Where, for instance, I think the, the year I, I came in as supervisor of social studies, you know, an example would be the competency was to be able to analyze life in the 1920s or change like that, extremely very specific and, and in a silo, in essence. We were in that context. We've actually made a shift where, within our US history curriculum, there were, I think, around 10 to 12 content competencies. We've narrowed that down, down to four competencies, historical thinking skills, which are a little bit more broad, but it's really getting students to start thinking like a historian. So they're not necessarily focused on a specific time period or content. It's asking students to look at, you know, one of our competencies is change, continuity, and context. So take a look at a time period and stick that, look at things of, you know, what has changed? What are things that have continued? And what is the context of those changes and things that have continued? So you can really apply that to any time period. So it, it gives teachers, and I think students, as Michael was mentioning earlier, that opportunity for students to have multiple opportunities to show that they, to demonstrate that they understand this competency using possibly other content as the vehicle for that demonstration. So it could be, maybe they are using 1920s to show it, and then later in the year as they start going through things in the 1960s and social changes, that they can demonstrate that again using different content. So I, I'm very fortunate that the social studies department, the individuals and the teachers, and really all the departments I work with, quite frankly, very progressive thinking. They're really, they're hungry for these different types of changes. There was one of our teachers that actually started her own ELO in a sense, attached to our street law class. So students, a big part of the street law class is taking field trips and seeing how the justice system works at the jails and the police department and law firms. And so she had created this program where students were able to start doing, exploring some of this more on their own. And as soon as she started being off the ground last year, COVID, COVID struck and it kind of shut things down. But Steve, one thing Steve didn't mention is one thing he's looking to do with our ELO coordinator is start this program called Ready Set ELO, which is very closely tied to what this teacher had done, where it's almost like this prepackaged ELO attached to courses. So it's, it's, it's really exciting stuff. I think, I'm excited to see what that, what this teacher's gonna do when we move forward next year in hopefully a little bit more normal circumstances. Our world language department has been using APL standards, which is the Association for Teaching Foreign Languages. So those are leading standards nationally for what students should know at each level. And one, I think one great transition we've been in the last few years is our individual language groups really worked in like silos of what, like this is where you should know by the end of French. This is where you should know by the end of German. And we've really streamlined, no, this is where you should know by the end of level one language, whether you're in Spanish, German, French. Latin is a little bit different because it's not spoken as much anymore. But, you know, we still have more words doing that. Part of it has really just been educating our teachers on what the standards are, what they mean, and how does this play out within their teaching. And our, not to take up too much more time, but our, our art and music teachers also are working within their national standards. Some of those courses are semester, semester courses, so there's only like three or four big competencies and standards that they use. But one thing that's really interesting in those, these are standards that are used almost ninth through 12. So students have, the more they go through these art and these music classes, they're constantly demonstrating that they understand these, these competencies and these standards, but at much more complex levels and sophisticated levels than we are. So I think I'm taking up too much time.
I'll be quick. And I would say that, you know, sometimes something that's even harder than change is saying you're gonna change for over a decade and waiting to make that change. And I will share, where's the comfort, how's the culture? I've been at Concord High School for 23 years, worked as an English teacher for a long time. When Mike came in last year, we started talking about this. He's like, this sounds great. How long have you been working on this? And we're like, 12 years. And everyone was like, for goodness sake, help us move some of this forward, please. So what I'll share with you is that, you know, there's work to do in connecting the departments for sure. But if there's one thing everybody's ready for is the next steps in what's, what's exciting and what's around the bend. And what I'll share is that there's been a lot of talk about having some cross-department teams to make sure that what we're doing is actually linking. So Jim and I have talked about humanities and how the social studies and the English could link, and science and math, talking about how that can be linked. So there's a lot of work to be done there. But I can say that while change is hard, and that piece of the culture is hard, the resounding feeling across the building from the faculty is, we're ready. We've been saying we're gonna do this. And my last little just example of that is, I interviewed a 2010 graduate from Concord High School for a science position today, and he said, yeah, you were starting to work on competencies when I was there in 2010. And I was like, oh, for goodness sake. So we're ready, and we've been ready, and now it's time to put it all together.
And I will, I mirror what they've said, and I just say, and all three of us have this practice of we do goal setting with our departments. We chunk it into manageable pieces over the timeframe of a year. And you really do those things well. You're still working on the other aspects of CBE and the transition, but you, you narrow the scope so you're able to still keep an umbrella, celebrate your wins, continue to progress. And as time goes on, you know, we'll, we'll have integrated project-based opportunities. We'll get there, but it's, you know, a couple of units at a time, maybe not the entire course is that way. So it's just a work in progress, and you chunk it and you, you move. It's worth taking the time to do it right. And I think that there's a commitment amongst the staff and a readiness to do that.
Yeah, and I would just add to your, to the question you asked. The role of a teacher is gonna evolve into more facilitator. So, you know, if you think back what we were saying about the STEM lab, you know, the time is focused on kids doing things. And the teacher's role is to facilitate that process, keep them focused, help them get over roadblocks and getting assignments and, and work done. And one of the things about Concord High School, I will just say parenthetically, is that everybody, it seems like everybody has been there for 24 years or 33 years, or it's amazing. Nobody ever leaves, which is actually a good thing. But my point is that it's gonna be difficult, not impossible, but because people have been doing things a certain way, it takes, it takes some time to get people reoriented, refocused on doing them a bit differently. But again, I would reference what I said earlier. These are outstanding teachers, and they're true professionals, and their focus is always on the kids. And so that's what I think what Kailene was referring to, is that people are ready to, to embrace this and follow through on.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Do we have any additional questions from the other boardroom?
I just had a question. How many, how many pathways to graduation do you have in place? And that might be a strange question. It may have changed based on competency-based education. But, you know, like say, a student is on one trajectory, but then they run into some roadblocks. What are, so?
You mean alternative type of programs?
Oh, just happen, what are the different ways that I can get my, from my freshman year to my diploma in right here?
Well, there's, there's the diploma academy. There's.
We, we have a number of ways. Diploma Academy is one of them. That, those are some, you know, for students who are ready to move into like workforce, I'm, I'm ready to be beyond Concord High School and traditional school setting. That, that supplements some of the courses, math, English, science, your core components. It's a state minimum standard diploma. Then we have a Concord School District diploma that we have a partnership with Second Start. And we call it our adult diploma program. Again, a state minimum diploma, but it's work-based. You can take on a job, an internship, get paid, your, your driver license, your driver's ed class, what you can get credit for. So it has a more broad scope, a more realistic life experiences. Then we have some, you know, high-track with the, you know, for your high-performance students and AP courses, running start courses, dual enrollment courses, so they're graduating with college credits. We have some early graduation pathways where a student can wrap it up by junior year with college credit and, you know, be applying. We have, I think this year, out of my conference, I have three students who've chosen that pathway, going on a four-year schools. CRPC provides, they're looking at more of the industry credential pathways too, and trying to, you know, develop more of that. I think we have a numerous, numerous different avenues to accomplish a diploma by the state minimum standard comp district, et cetera, and different timelines adjustable to individual students on what their game plan is. And as we dive further into this pathway mapping as a school, I just think it's gonna open up more opportunities. Either of you have any?
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, a big philosophy behind some of these pathways too, which has actually been a pretty big change over the last five to 10 years. It was done by a former principal, I don't know, Catherine Murphy's good friend, Jean Connelly, was detracking our classes in high school. It used to be where you would, depending on recommendation, you could end up in one of three different history classes based on a teacher's perception of your academic ability. And once you're on, once you were in that track, you were set on that track for, for the next four years. And so that does not happen anymore. Students at all academic levels, and whether they're a top performing student or a student who struggles, they're all in the same US history class. They're all in the same science class. And they have that choice once they move on to move into some of those AP courses if, if they find that that's where they want to go. I think the tracking.
That's a huge part of the equity.
Well, it's a part of the track, what happened with the tracking was there was, there was not much equity. And it was just a very, you know, homogeneous group ended up in those AP courses. And there wasn't a great representation of our student body. So I think that's just an important, you know, philosophical approach to make sure it's mentioned that.
That's huge.
Students, all of our students have all equal opportunity to take our most challenging courses and even towards graduations.
Thank you. That's great.
It's a short one this time. You, you mentioned, I'm getting the words wrong, but circle forward, the fourth level of MTSS. They're starting next year. You said starting with ninth through 12 graders. Is that right? Somebody from?
So we, we started this year, and we're, we're gonna be looking to establish next year as a student council.
Tim, why don't you tell them how you know about this stuff?
That, I did, I did my dissertation in restorative justice education. So, and.
He just received his PhD a couple of weeks ago.
And, and one of, one, one of the insights of Donna Pally when they hired me was to say, hey, we've been doing this MTSS work, and we've been trying to get restorative justice really going. We need somebody really push that. And so I've been able to push that agenda. And one, one good piece about it, we had, we had now have 21 people at Concord High School staff, from ed assistants to head coaches, administrators, teachers, trained. And the universal approach, circle forward for restorative justice, which is proactive solutions developing those relationships. Our goal is by October next year, and we work in conjunction Suffolk University Institute for Restorative Justice who we're partnering with on this work. They will be doing, and we're gonna work into the ELO for students in our school to receive credit to participate in this training, to be a student mediation group. We're targeting students ninth through 12 to build capacity for this to continue. And every year, we'll be looking for students to apply to this program. If they're interested, advertise it, apply. Like we'd be looking around 20 students to participate and, and, you know, shore up that training and stuff by October. And hopefully by November, begin having that student mediation council available.
That's very exciting. So my question is, October next year, you want to be including ninth graders. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Are you in touch with DCS to be contacting us for eighth grade potential candidates to be included in that group?
That is an excellent question, and my, my response is not yet, but will happen. Thank you for putting that in.
I just want to say a quick thing about these circle groups. Again, like, like a lot of stuff we've talked about tonight, it may seem, it may seem out of focus or off-center to start a class by getting the students in a circle and having to talk to each other a little bit. Maybe talk about something they're thankful for, say something nice to, to each other. But over time, those things, in the same manner as advisory works, creates a sense of community. And as we look around our world once again, that's something that's invaluable. And that's the way we want, as a leadership group, that's the way we want our school to be. We want our kids to feel connected. We want them to feel safe. We want to feel a sense of belonging in that building, that people caring about them. And I think it's, it's not untrue for me to say that that's more important for us than the academics. Not by a lot. The academics are always gonna be central. But the academics are built upon that foundation of kids feeling good about being there, feeling safe, feeling a sense of belonging.
Danny, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I'm impressed with what I've heard. And then I guess a question is either what or where are you all getting resources to kind of fuel these things that you're looking for, like the STEM labs and stuff like that? It sounds like this gentleman had a passion for it, went to school. So could you share a little bit about like where all these things are coming from and how you're absorbing?
Well.
What?
Yeah, let me just take a, yeah, take a stab at it, and then you can add anything else to it. But we've been really using our grants and using the Perkins Grant, using the federal grants, our entitlements to be able to do some of that work, especially in things like Title, Title IV, training under Title II, so that helps it. But we also have been talking to our school board about it. I mean, this is part of our operations. These are the opportunities that we're giving our kids. And, you know, I, I really think that public schools have an obligation to be progressive, to meet the needs of the youngsters in the world of work and in the world of wherever they're in. And so we have an obligation to do that. I think our board clearly understands that. And they've been very supportive of the work that we're doing, you know, the direction that we're taking. Now, we have a lot of, you know, there's, there's some, some, obviously, we talked about some of the renovations, and we got the grant tour a couple of weeks ago. And that's gonna take some money, but that's gonna be a decision that our school board will make to benefit their students. But I know that they are committed to that work. And right now, their commitment is getting everybody back on track to, to some of the things that, that, that the team talked about today, about preparing for the future, and it's really important. So I think it's a combination places to, to, to have the funds to do that. And the tuition, let's not forget. I don't want to put that aside. You guys are, you know, you help with that. You pay tuition, and, and that, that helps cover the costs for your students to have access to all of these programs. And, and that's, and that's a plus.
Any additional questions? So I want to start by thanking you for, for coming tonight. This was a very different presentation than what we've seen in years past. Historically, it's been a review of hard data, which we can all review it obviously at our own time. But hearing what was really happening in Concord and hearing what, what you folks are looking to do, definitely the current changes that might be coming is, is exciting to hear. And it's a, it's a common theme that we hear, so just kind of a couple of little anecdotal things. There's, there's always seems to be a disconnect between Deerfield's board and necessarily what's happening in Concord. This is, this is huge for us to kind of get these updates. And I genuinely appreciate you guys, you know, sharing all this information with us. Something, just feedback for you guys is, you know, families in this town have always been very hesitant prior to your experience with Concord with some of the kids so far away to this giant school in the big city, right? Which is kind of entertaining to think of. But the feedback we get after the Concord experience has always been very positive. And so, I mean, I think that's a credit to the programs that you guys have and, and the experience that our kids are having when they're there, so. By the way, that extended freshman rotation is something that will, I think, will log away. It will maybe be some of those concerns. Yeah, absolutely. And so.
And I think we want to keep this dialogue going. I think this, I think we talked about relationships with kids and teachers. And so, I mean, I think the, the relationship between our two organizations is really important. When we, when Patty gently reminded us about our obligations around reporting, and I was new too, so I, and, and, and I knew that this had to be done. We wanted to come and see you. We, we didn't want just numbers. That's not what Concord High School is about. And so I hope that this continues. I hope we, I hope that Tim comes back and does a restorative justice, because it is a little different. You know? And we'd be happy to do that, you know? He, although with us along, I mean, he can talk for a long time. Honestly, those things are important for the community to hear. You, you spend good taxpayers' money to send your kids there. And yes, they do great, but I think people, in addition to parents. Um, and yes, they do great, but I think people, in addition to parents who, who really care about it, there's a whole other group of people that live in this community that time parents, right? And they wanna know if their money's in the dollars or whatever, and I think they are. But, you know, sometimes if they can hear it and see it and visit, maybe the next meeting will be at the high school. We can show them some of the things we do.
It'd be cool, yeah.
We'd love to have you. And we'd love to have some of our board members join us.
I'll see you. Two hours of rotica for eight hours of show.
Wait, are we negotiating? This is, this is fun, let's go.
Patty and I have been around a long time, so we know how this works.
I, I also, uh, secondarily, and I try to make sure that, uh, you know, we as a board here appreciate our staff and what this last year has been for them. And so, uh, although, you know, you most certainly are the staff of another, another district, another town on the board, I can imagine what this last year has been like for you guys, cause I know what it's been like for our staff. Um, and so it's very easy to sit in this seat as a board member in any town or any district in the state and realize, uh, how much work gets pushed down to the administration and the staff inside the school. So, um, on, to the benefit of our children, everything you guys have done this year is, is greatly appreciated. And, uh, I know our kids are benefiting from your hard work and your efforts, so I appreciate it greatly, I think we all know.
Okay, absolutely.
We will certainly appreciate your time and having you guys come down and chat with us.
One last thing really quick, I believe these three folders. This is, uh, a booklet that's been very important to us, this is called Where's Compassy-Based Education? I think you guys wanna have a chance, uh, take a look at it. This is, uh, questions about compass, questions about compass-based education. And this one is, uh, a miss about compass-based education. So, that's for you guys.
Thank you.
All right, we've taken, you have five minutes left. Pause that. Are we recording yet?
Yeah.
We are recording. Um, for anybody that watches us, uh, thank you for watching and, uh, hopefully, uh, you've got some interesting feedback from what Concord's doing with our kids. We're gonna move on to the minutes of April 21st. What is wish of the board?
It was written.
Motion. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Nate. Do we have any changes?
I did not.
I did not.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up, we have the minutes of May 5th. What is wish of the board?
It was written.
Second.
All right, move by Gigi, seconded by Nate. Any changes?
I have none.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, minutes are done.
Great job, Chris, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Everything goes, everything goes faster with the binder. Same. All right, uh, let's see, public comments? Any public comments? Nothing? All right. Uh, a general review.
Yes.
Uh, does anybody have anything to add? Patty?
We do. Uh, we have one consent item and five items under, uh, appointments and resignations, number 10.
And we will be going to non-public?
Yes.
Under C, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any additional items from the board? Okay. Uh, reviewing of correspondence, uh, there was a-
We added a consent item just now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking I was tied up.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Patty, was that before the driving?
That is the driving. The consent item is the driving, yep.
Okay.
Yep, so, um, Jack's driving the school, as you see in your handy D and D binder, um, sent something, a, a request to renew his contract. Um, and we included the current contact so that you could compare. And I believe the price was in the email.
Okay. Uh, so he is, uh, looking to raise the current rate from 620 to-
No, 2021 is 650. And then 2122 would be 675. Which would be 70 now. Is that all what the context is?
His agreement.
Yep.
His agreement is old.
Yeah, this is the, this is the current one for, yep, this ends 2021 and it's currently at 650. Yep.
So, uh, we ever had anybody else offer driving school here, or is this Jack's been here for-
Yeah, he's been at pretty much for a very long time.
I'd say for- Probably close to 15 years, cause Mr. Miller was 20 years ago.
Hey, not that long ago.
Let me rephrase that. Mr. Miller was 22 years ago, 23 years ago, who wanted to be technical, but, um, that's near the end of the day.
Nate? How does this work if we just, this is, I mean, obviously our school here only goes to eighth grade, they're not driving. How does this?
Parents bring the kids, right?
To here?
Yeah, yeah, they have, they have their class here.
And who's using a classroom?
Yeah.
And then-
Well, not now, he's not there right now. Well, he does.
They go drive around.
Okay. Okay, so they don't have to take drivers that are in progress, is what I'm saying they do it here?
They do it here, yes.
They put it on the option too.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, I guess I will seek a motion to approve the new agreement with Jack's Driving School.
Oh.
Second.
All right, moved by Gigi, seconded by Nate. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you need anything else from us on that, Patty?
No, no, thank you.
All right. I'm gonna give a little agenda. All right. Uh, let's see, correspondence. Uh, there was a couple of emails. There was an email from the chairman of the both school board regarding, uh, some of the conversations we've been having about high school. And that was placed in the drive for a greater review. And then it's also sent over to Nate for distribution to his committee, uh, in their work. Uh, I don't know if anybody had any other questions about that. And then we have, uh, uh, let's see. Updates from the music department?
Yeah, I have that, I was gonna put on the informational, but now it's fine.
We'll cover that then. And, uh, everything else I think is all set. Okay. Uh, let's see here. We have to vote on the public hearing expenditure for the approximately $128,000. 128? 128, uh, to come from, for the engineering study to come out of our capital reserve. So I would look for a motion to withdraw approximately, do we list? Does it have to be exactly that, Patty?
Nope, you can say approximately.
So I'll look for a motion to withdraw approximately $128,000 from the Deerfield Community School addition capital reserve trust fund for the purpose of architectural and engineering services. So moved. Moved by Jeff, seconded by?
Second.
Gigi. Uh, discussion regarding this, obviously we've had our public hearing and effectively started the processes of just formalizing withdrawal of funds. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, that is approved. And, uh, I presume that Ms. Whitty is gonna be speaking for Mr. Greve?
Uh, oh, wait, cause he's not here.
Mrs. Dave made her on the list. Would you like to be one or the other?
Uh, I, I'll be Ms. Ms. Whitty.
Okay.
Oh, there are two kindergartners telling me that at lunchtime they played principal and assistant principal. And he was the principal, assistant principal, Mr. Green, and she was the assist, uh, the principal, Mrs. Whitty. And she talked just like you. And I said, well, what did she say? Yes! A big old smile on his face, I think out of the mask. Uh, but I do have, this is from Chris, an update from him. Um, he has two bids in and he's waiting for one more with the painting. Um, he's continuing to call their painters. Um, some painters did not get back to him, but he has at least two bids, um, coming for that. Um, he met with two contractors today about the carpet for the, um, library. And he's hoping for their numbers by next week. The FISA board, he's met with two contractors and he has been trying to call other contractors to bid the project. And he hopes to have the two bid pricing by the end of, of the week, this week. The vanity project is out on the website and in an ad. The fire alarm panel, Amber, he and Amber have received simple questions from contractors and are meeting with a third contractor that we'll be meeting next week. Bids are due by June 1st for the fire alarm panel. The baseball field has been complete. The crack seal in line striping, um, is being scheduled. Power sweeping, um, was canceled for now, um, it's not needed for now. And then the long, uh, the long jump pitsy on the playground chips and the sidewalk repair and turf repair. He's waiting on pricing from our, um, our, the MPO Northeast, um, company that we use. And he had, hopes to have that by the end of this week. Um, he does come in, uh, to the board meeting or having all the updates. I think he said he's coming to the board meeting, um, for the next board meeting. For updated pricing and the, and the quotes and, uh, basically what we're doing moving forward.
Perfect. All right, so, um, I didn't have a chance to finish everything I wanted. All right, so my update for the CIP, I did talk to John Harrington. He said the CIP was approved by the planning board and is in effect. So that would allow us to go back and now we can start reviewing additional projects that we had listed on the CIP. If we wanna start moving them forward to look at, or adapt these, frame those projects.
There's, there's an official circuit?
Oh, no, go.
There's an official copy that rests in the town offices or something?
Presumably, that's what I didn't have a chance to, I didn't do yet, but he said it was approved by the planning board. So my presumption is, is that whatever is, uh, required to make it official is somehow housed in their, um, offices.
Great.
Patty, go ahead.
I was just gonna step back if we were done with that conversation. Uh, Mrs. Whitty, when, under end of year, did you have one more request?
Oh, yes, do you wanna ask that too?
Yeah, I can answer that.
Um, as you know, the eighth grade team and Mr. Greve, um, has been working, have been working on the end of year, um, field trips and graduation, um, ceremony and semi-formal for our eighth graders. He's also been working with, uh, members of the community and, um, our eighth graders, as you know, are going to Six Flags. They're also going to, um, do a climb of a mountain and going to have a field day of sorts, a magnet day here. Um, and we have the graduation, um, costs covered. However, we, uh, are requesting, uh, that we use, that we're able to use $2,000 for the semi-formal. Um, the, the kids are still working on the theme that they want. There's thirty, three different choices. I think they fill out a Google form.
Yeah, the, um, theory, whatever, I think is what it is. Theme one.
Oh, the already one?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead. There were three different themes and they did a Google form and I, I think, we talked about it after school, but I can't remember which one it was.
So it sounds like you're asking us for $2,000.
To, to help with-
Enchanted Forest.
Enchanted Forest is what the theme will be. Yeah?
That's three. All right, so, uh, we have a request from Principal Whitty, uh, to allow $2,000 for the semi-formal for the eighth grade class. Uh, look for a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jeff, seconded by Gigi. Nate, conversation?
Yeah, is there, is there precedent for this? Um, there has always been fundraising and I think having a year of COVID, uh, they haven't gone on field trips or anything. So how, what happened to the fundraising that they've been doing for the last three years and why are they not have funds for this?
There, they, they wasn't, there was no fundraising last year, no fund, well, there was some fundraising last year, but, but it got stopped in March and there was no fundraising this year whatsoever. So, um, the, the money that they have available is going towards the graduation costs, going towards their, uh, field trip to Six Flags, which, and, and we are using some of the budget money for that. Field trip line is able to pay for some of the buses. Um, but it's, there's definitely, they definitely need some funding for, to pay for the semi-formal. They, I don't, I, I think Tricia better have a better idea, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact numbers.
Yes, no, you're right. And might be, I'm using quite a big one for taking a field fun year end of year trip to Six Flags, um, for buses and, and there really has been no fundraising the past couple of years.
So this is more of a COVID, because of COVID, it's been, no fundraising essentially as, as a slate out, and it's not great at the beginning of the year.
Correct.
I got you. Okay.
Sorry, more than, go ahead, Jeff.
Where, so the money coming from the surplus that we're carrying this year, would we just?
Just overspend the line.
Can we cover that?
I think you're okay.
Uh, any additional discussion? I mean, I'm, I'm all for giving the kids, trying to return some sense of normalcy, hopefully giving them that.
Uh, I'll also add that there's some things that we have to do this year that we haven't had to do in the past. Like in the past, we've been able to order a bunch of pizzas and have them on a table and the kids help themselves. And literally, they're, it's being catered, we're bringing in, um, a, an ice cream truck. And there's, there's things that we're doing to be COVID safe that, uh, that we wouldn't normally have had to do.
Thank you. All right. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fire in the hole.
I told Brian I know how to get money too.
All right, uh, that brings us to our fiscal 21 update.
You are at $802,000.
Seven.
And that's before the appeals are liquidated, so that will, I think, be the next couple of weeks.
Does that include the grant? Cause we were about eight, we were floating at about 800, then we had that grant from, it was like 200, you're, you're-
Oh, the IRS, the IRS refund. No, that comes in as miscellaneous revenue.
Okay.
Unanticipated revenue.
So realistically, we're, we're back, we're sitting around.
If you count the, yeah, cause that's all off the taxes, yep.
Yep, all right. So the amount going back right now looks to be, I mean, I guess it's going back.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Well, that's good news. Any questions regarding that? All right. Uh, board reports, we have some members of the PTO here. Do you have a report for us, PTO members?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Had our flower sale that went amazingly well. Really excited, we totally sold out, so that was a relief. Um, we were only here for a few hours that day, like one to three, out of our school. And that is a great spot, by the way, we did our, uh, townwide yard sale there in October. Um, and we get a lot of traffic, we got a lot of hawks, a lot of excited people, so that was really great to hear the support. And then this past weekend, we did our Room into May event, which was not a fundraiser, it's just a fun evening event. Um, I had a lot of fun, I think the kids went home hot and tired and that was the whole plan, to get these kids out of their houses, off their computers and doing something active. Um, so we had a 5K, we had Maggie Lemay doing cardio strumming, which is super fun. And if you don't know what that is, you definitely need to try it. Lots of drumming on big exercise balls. Um, so lots of kids running, walking, riding their bikes, scooters. Um, and then some fun around the field, so I think everyone had a really great time. So I'm really glad we were able to make that event happen safely. And we collected a whole bunch of shoes for our ongoing shoe fundraiser, so we still have to box out front. This is gonna go on all summer, um, so hopefully we can get a lot of Gentlview shoes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Patty?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about the correspondence we received today, or I received, I don't know that you even saw it yet, um, from PTO. We received-
I didn't see the emails as I was walking in, so that's probably more bear of bad news, but, so I'm gonna let you go.
I know. So we've, I know, we finally heard back from our, um, insurance company and Amber sent it to me, um, like four o'clock this afternoon. And it says, unfortunately, Primex cannot extend coverage to the PTO as it operates as a non-governmental nonprofit. They're limited by statute to only provide property and liability coverage to local governmental entities. The PTO may want to speak to a local insurance agent of, as there are hopefully modestly priced coverage that would be available to the PTO in the commercial marketplace should they want to obtain insurance coverage. So that was right from our insurance company, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you for checking, we were kind of expecting that.
Absolutely worth the try.
And we wanted to make the insurance before the event, so we did go ahead and purchase the insurance already.
Oh, okay.
Thank goodness the flowers sell well, it would be good work.
Sorry, yeah, but we tried.
Yeah, thank you for trying.
Sure.
All right. Um, executive board, have you met the last two weeks?
We did meet, um, to accept a resignation, which was, uh, hard because of a key, key member of the SAU office. Um, and we hired somebody as well.
Yes, we nominated an OT, an SAU life OT position. And then, do you mind if I share who, just so everyone's aware?
No, yeah, thanks.
Um, so Christine Veda is our assistant business administrator, um, and she's resigned. We're very happy for her, she's gonna be a VA, she's, this has been her goal, so good for her, but really sad for us. She's done amazing work here, um, so she'll be, she'll be missed. We have an ad in the paper and Amber's, um, got her resumes right now.
Okay. It, was that all of the exec board did?
That was it, it was-
It was a quick one.
Okay. Uh, any questions for me? Cause I don't know if there will be any. No, okay. Uh, Principal Whitty?
Yes.
Uh, do you have a report?
I do.
You do?
Do you like me to speak?
Sure.
So this is covering May 6th through May 19th. I, uh, we have our track team, our baseball team, and girls on the run going here after school most days during the week. Our, uh, the track had a meet at Rochester High School. Um, the students did well. Um, the baseball game, we played Barrington and Stratford and then I think one other team. Sorry, I'm drawing a blank on that. Um, our UNH interns-
Our UNH interns have finished up with their inquiry project. They presented to the staff a couple of weeks ago, right after the last board meeting. And our four interns that are in the regular classroom and we have a PE and had a PE intern as well, graduated from UNH this past weekend. So we are very proud of them. They worked really hard this year. If you can get through a year like this as a, as a first year teacher and intern, you can pretty much get through anything in life. So they really stuck it out this year and did their best. They pivoted just with everyone else when we had to pivot. They helped out with our, some of our remote classes. If we had a teacher or one of our remote teachers was out, they stepped in and took over and helped us out a lot in that regard. They've done some wonderful work here and we were, we're really proud of them. They'll be with us for the remainder of the school year, so we're glad about that. Gigi will speak about, we did have a CRB meeting and I'll let her update the board on that. We had a very successful blood drive over at the Deerfield Community Church. That is the blood drive that we usually have here around this time, but due to COVID and not having our building open for public, we, they moved it over to the Deerfield Community Church. We had several staff members stop by and give blood. And I think they did what they would, like, I don't, like, Bonnie told me the number and I don't wanna mess it up, but I know that she said that we pretty much did exactly what we normally would have done if we had had it here. So that's, that's great news. We had our, our New Hampshire SASS testing continues. Yesterday, there was a huge shutdown with the Tide, the Tide company that runs the, I'm not sure exactly what happened. We had the entire state system crashed in the middle of testing and student officers were wiped out and it was, it was, yeah. But we were back up and running today, so, and actually it was within hours, we were back up and running yesterday, but we had already gone through the morning and kids were getting ready for lunch. And it's just, you can't, you know, they had their morning block planned. So we started today with our third graders and our seventh and eighth graders. And our fifth graders took the science, they were supposed to take the science on Monday and they took that today. And then next week, our eighth graders, fifth grade and eighth grade are the only grades that do the science portion of the New Hampshire SASS. Turkey tray was great. A lot of our staff members won some nice turkey trays and we were well attended. Kids talked about it on Monday, they were, and they were talking about it the week before and hoping that they won. So that was a great success and so glad that you were, that Turkey tray, that Focus was able to pull that off this year. On Thursday, May 13th, the Deerfield Honor Society had their induction ceremony. Ms. Dickey was unlike any other year. Ms. Dickey and Mrs. Swanson held the induction ceremony. Mr. B did the videoing and then they sent out the video to all of the parents of our Deerfield Honor Society members. So I wanna make sure I congratulate those members who have worked so hard to maintain their commitment in scholarship, leadership, service, character and citizenship, which are the five tenets of our Deerfield Honor Society. And they've upheld all of those even through some of the hardest times in our career, in our history of schooling. Mr. Motika joined us on Friday at Leadership and Patty comes on Fridays for Leadership. And discussing next steps in terms of moving forward with some things with our middle school. And he will be at, I believe, the next school board meeting. And he and I and maybe, we might have some middle school teachers as well who are going to do a presentation for the board. We had SAU leadership today in our outdoor classroom site number one. It was awesome. We had the whole SAU leadership throughout the course of this year. We have been meeting on Google Beats and that's, it's, it's been, we haven't seen each other in person since last summer, really. That was, we got together at Pembroke Academy and, but we have not gotten together all year long. Nobody's building has really been able to have us there. And so last Friday, when Patty was at Leadership, I said, we're all vaccinated, let's have everybody here. We'll use the classroom, we'll get a fire going. So they came, we had a wonderful morning. We had hoped to be making, to be able to make s'mores, but the fire did go out. I don't know who would have done that. Somebody let the fire go out. But we had lots, we had treats and I made a pot of coffee and brought it down in a big, you know, insulated container. And it was just awesome to see everybody in person. We got a lot accomplished. Talked about a lot of things that we were planning for the summer and moving into next year. So it was great. They were thoroughly impressed with the job with the outdoor classrooms. I don't know what some of them were expecting. They were just gonna walk into a field and go under a canopy, but they literally, they couldn't believe it when they walked down there. Somebody showed up in high heels. I don't know if she was expecting to be walking down the stairs and into the woods where there were stumps and logs and sticks. But it was great. It was so good to see everybody have a leg and they, they loved being here, so. I do, quickly too, I did, I looked into School Spring, which is something that we have, had talked about in, at a previous board meeting. And the cost for one job posting on School Spring is about $250. And that's just to do a basic search and then it goes up from there for, to post three different jobs. It would be a package of $650, so it does have a fee attached to it. At this point, we have our applicants for, we've received over 30 applicants for our primary grade position that we posted for. So I, I just wanted to mention that in terms of a little research that I had done, so we can talk about that more after. But just wanted to let you know I had done that.
Awesome. Any questions for Principal Witty? All right, update on the CRB, Gigi?
Yes, there was a CRB meeting and Principal Witty, if I miss things, please feel free to interact, check. Because somehow, I think I got left off the, get the minutes piece, so I take, I always take notes. But I, and then I did send an email, but I did not get to check my email because I was in appointment and a meeting right up until six o'clock. So please jump in. Last scheduled, it was the last scheduled meeting for CRB this year. The group felt like the goals were accomplished and one of the big goals was to get the social studies curriculum approved. And readers, a couple of the readers were Barbara Cook, Brenda Eves. And I, I can't remember if Ken ended up, did Ken Heckman end up being able to read or not? I know the big question. He was interested in reading, but I'm not sure that he was able, he was not able to, Brenda or Karen were not able to attend the meeting. Lindsay, who is head of the department, said that there was not a lot of revision from the draft to the proposed. She said there were some district-wide areas that should be consistent across all the, all the curriculum areas and those things still need to be changed. They weren't changed yet. There was some vernacular that was made consistent across the board. They took a look at environments and understandings. They did some work on the third grade, changed biomes to readings. They, they are hoping that there will be some professional development. There are some titles that are needed for doing some things like teaching kids how to ask and phrase good questions. There's some competencies that are gonna be changing, so the next steps will be to work on units based on the new competencies. And the schedule for board approval for that curriculum is on June 2nd. And so that was kind of the bulk of the social studies work. Well, language is, was this year a little bit in the limbo just because of the situation that we were in. Art, even though they're not up for revision based on what they, what their kind of best practices, they've kind of revised their curriculum yearly. The guidance curriculum is up for a full year review next year. And there's talk about whether there should be a separate curriculum or whether the guidance stuff gets pushed in or embedded in the other curriculum, which is directly in the classroom. Kind of gonna take a look at the purpose of the guidance curriculum at BCF, which is not necessarily taught or graded. And Kristen, you suggested looking at some type of maybe responsive classroom and work-study habits as part of that. Which, you know, would probably help set the course around climate for new teachers. And then Chris Motika reminded that if the standards were changed through review of the curriculum, he just needs to be made aware of that. And just a reminder to all the teams that CRB is the venue for bringing revisions so that all revisions get kind of vetted through that, that channel and just not kind of rogue revisions to your, to your curriculum. How did you?
Great. And then we said our September meeting.
Oh.
September 13th, so usually it's the second Monday of the month. So we said that and everybody knows.
All right. So it sounds like that'd be our next meeting that you're gonna be looking to, or the CRB is gonna be looking to present the new, or the updated social studies curriculum? Okay.
So that's three. So that's Chris coming, Chris Kay coming for facilities, Chris Motika coming for CBE and then also social studies curriculum.
So do we wanna push that to the second meeting, June? Do you?
Well, I mean.
Have you finished by then?
It's, yeah, that's the problem.
Oh, good point.
I mean, it's, you know, it is what it is. We'll try to keep the rest of it on the light.
Okay.
And just let people know that there's, you know, we usually try to put the guests first, but they're short.
Can the, can the curriculum be sent out outside of them? Or is that not reasonable?
No reason why not, right?
Yep, yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you, if they can get it to us as soon as possible, put it in the drive.
We can do that and then I'm thinking, why don't we? Just, I don't know, what order do you wanna place in there? Go ahead.
Well, we could do, unless Chris really needs to share something with the board, he could probably just do his spreadsheet and list out everything and then just what the update is next to it. Unless he needs to come and get some app, if any, if he wants to take any action.
Yeah. So if he wants to close note his stuff, then maybe an opportunity to do that, let him off the hook easy.
And then he doesn't have to be here and.
We can let him off the hook easy and push that to the end. LA is, Jeff, leave that out.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay. All right. Jeffrey, sorry, question. So you said the CRB said that they're gonna look at professional development to the new social studies curriculum. Is that something that we do in the board or?
I don't think so. I imagine that it's probably in the goals that are already set. I didn't, I didn't hear any talk. I'm looking for specific things. And that, that particular thing was a very specific thing. That was some time to look for titles for some resources. So. Question.
Yeah, there's a couple of books that they wanted and we've already ordered them, so just to get the, get the first copy in and if they look good, then we'll, we'll order more copies from people just about inquiry-based learning and like you said, developing questions and, you know. And the middle school will continue to work on, because they're doing their social studies, so they'll continue to look at Chris on that. And they've actually really enjoyed, I've spoken with many of the teachers and they have really enjoyed doing the social studies piece outside of their comfort zone. You know, being so subject-specific and they, but like I said, and they, they got, they realized how much better they got at it the second term and then the third time, so. And it's been fun to be part of, really, and they'll probably, I don't know where they'll pick up with Chris for that over the summer. I think we can work within what our, the confines of what we have. We don't need anything extra right now.
Yeah, I just wanna say I'm glad that we're gonna make time for that because just given the times that we're living in, I feel like the social studies curriculum is really important. And on top of that, we don't have, not necessarily, what, do we, how many certified teachers do we have in the middle school teaching? Is one, one teacher in the middle school certified in social studies?
Technically, no, but we've definitely some in eighth grade. And then definitely some in sixth grade and then we have one of our specialists is certified and has helped as she can, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just, I was just saying, I'm just happy that we are gonna make time for it. I think it'll be important, but it's important.
Awesome. All right, anything else for the CRB or regarding the CRB? All right, Jeff, is the building expansion committee met or are we kind of in the holding pattern?
Holding pattern, two quick updates. We added a new committee member, Jeff Mackey, who reached out. He was a new to town facilities director for the Hampstead School District. So he brings, he wants to plant some roots in the community, get involved. And he has the experience. Being a facilities director, schools have been through similar processes. So he's now a member of the committee and we are still just waiting on the contract. Going back and forth.
All right, and Nate, the high school options committee met last night. We gave, we gave your update.
We did. And we have a couple of things to go over. One was look at the responses to a survey that we set out these past couple of weeks focused on the Concord High School experience over the last 10 years, addressed to current, recent students and their families, graduates from Concord High School. So we will bring those results to the board maybe at the next meeting. But there was a little bit of a hiccup, which was that we didn't really get much, as much turnout as we were hoping for. And I think in retrospect, the question about the UNH paying the money, the UNH's a college study, might be a better way than actually getting, you know, involvement and responses. We got a very low number of them. They were all very, not all, but it was, it was very positive and it largely corroborated with the, the results we set up on the one from 2009. But they were not, it wasn't the sample size that we would, we would like to have. So we're gonna take another two weeks to try to increase, maybe try some new avenues. Try to, try to collect some more data on that to develop a little bit more. But the data that we saw did correspond pretty well with the results that we saw from the one, like I said, 12, 13 years ago. Like you mentioned, like the conference of people, that, that people seemed to have a very positive experience at Concord by a large. It does, it does show a shift from the pre-Coconrad experience to the, to the post-Conrad experience. Parents, or at least those responding to the surveys, seem to go through a, a shift over that time. But we'll have more data for you next meeting, hopefully. And the other thing that we talked about is how we can really get to this point of having heard from the community, values, themes, what are the things that people are talking about and wanting. And then how can we take the list of about 10 to 12 schools and really start to narrow that down to a more manageable number? Could be our next step and we'll bring to you in the next meeting or two.
Daddy?
I had one school call me today and then a voicemail and asked for an update on where we are in the process. And before, I, I knew we were coming tonight before I called that person and say anything. Should I just summarize kind of where, where you're at in terms of the update you just gave or should I give further information?
That's where we are right now. So I would say that we are ending, we're finishing sort of a community data collection phase. And so we're getting to the point where we can have a, have a narrower list, but we haven't really gotten that yet.
Okay.
So we, we should have more information in the next two or four weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, there's a lot of data to digest. We can really start diving into all of it, so. The committee's doing good work.
We can just go with what I got, but it's hard to.
Listen, I offered, I threw it out there. Nate wasn't impressed with my scientific method. I call it more. All right, anything else for Nate regarding the high school options? So you're not, we're gonna move on. All right, this brings us to policies. We have a couple of card reading policies that if the board is comfortable, we can dispose of. Patty, do you have any updates that need to be made aware of?
Just, I think it's stating the obvious, but I H A M A, the first one on the list, we need to fill in, it says K to 8 in the yellow highlight, or it says K to 12, we just pick that and put K to 8. So I'm sure you're approving the version that we are intending to publish.
Okay, so electoral motion to approve policy is I H A M A, which is the Teaching About Alcohol, Drugs and Tobacco Policy.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Jeff, seconded by Gigi. Any additional discussion regarding I H A M A? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as approved. Next policy is gonna be I J O. Any updates? Uh, any updates, something to add?
Uh, no, it's just yours is very brief, and from 2006, and the School Board Association updated policies a full page. Um, so it's one, I feel like that's in line with your values and beliefs, and it's all set to go if you like the sample policy.
Alright, we have two policies, we have a, I believe, an A O X N R.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I missed that.
I think that's a different one, yeah, I think that's the other one.
Oh, okay.
Um, I believe maybe I'm wrong, but I remember there was one that there was, seemed a little bit, and I think that older was not, I think, I don't know if I can.
Yeah, you did send some changes, and I know that I printed that.
So we have I J O K with the OXN R in it. Or the OXN R version?
Okay, oh, thank you.
Well, you can't let Patty have the OXN R version. Now she's in love. So Nate, so can you speak to your policy or your edits? Uh, if you're comfortable with that.
So my, um, changes were in keeping with the improved policy and what I see as establishing or desiring to establish kind of a two-way partnership, what seems to be the gist of the, of the policy, of the purpose of the purpose of the policy. Um, and in the first one, if you look at the third paragraph, opportunities provided to parents and ways to assist with homework, give feedback to teachers and help parents, etc. I, I thought that that one little fragment of a sentence, give feedback to teachers, was the only mention in this whole, in this whole policy about, about the two-way nature of this relationship that is described, or it seems to be desired. The rest of the whole, all of these paragraphs are about how it's sort of creates a one-direction picture where the school is sort of disseminating information rather than collecting much information from parents and from the community. And so I thought that it was worth developing that idea a little more, so I added that last paragraph, kind of putting yellow down there if you're looking at it. And I am, I am not proposing that this is a final version of this at all, and I think that probably isn't worth going to at least one more reading, but, and I'd be looking for other thoughts from the, from the board as well, but, and also maybe this should go to the teachers, to administration as sort of a proposal before we make this decision. But it basically describes a way of soliciting feedback, of kind of having more of a two-way dialogue between parents, and community members towards the school, the administration, teachers, et cetera, as well as the well-described other direction of the relationship we've described in the rest of this policy. Any questions about that?
Questions for Nate? So obviously, if we, I think the best thing to do on this one is to, let's put both policies, or both versions on the agenda again next week, and allow everybody a chance to digest it. I know the policy that we have is required by law, so any changes to it, I would wanna make sure coincide with the laws, which. Everybody comfortable with pushing that off to the next meeting?
Is it worth asking the administration, or what do you think on how, how do we, this is a board decision, how do we get a, a full sort of look at this, I don't know.
Um, I, it would be great if we could have the opportunity on Friday morning to talk about that last paragraph that you added, and then we could, just to think about it and.
Yeah, and suggest they can over the.
Get feedback, um, yeah, that would be great. And I think it's a legally required policy, but there's no, not a lot of reference to law on this one, so I think we're, it's.
To legal law, right.
Okay.
That's right.
Jeff, I guess my, my thought and feedback on that paragraph that was added is, soliciting, as we've learned in the last year, trying to solicit feedback from the community is really challenging, and I feel like you get feedback when something is super negative or super positive, and that's probably gonna be submitted voluntarily without requiring that, that communication. So I like the idea of the feedback loop, but I feel like it, it naturally exists. I know that I communicate with, you know, teachers or administrations, I feel like that's the right move when I have a concern. So I, I just, I look at it as, is it gonna be effective, or is it just putting a burden on administration? And is it gonna be helpful if we, if we put that burden on them, is it actually gonna provide us feedback that we are able to take actionable? You know, I don't think it's, that's just my.
No, I think, I think it's a great point, but I think also as, as a teacher, I, at the end of my class, you know, and grants that I work with high school students, but even with middle school students, I, I've been in plenty of classes where the teacher hands out a series of, you know, surveys or something, kind of a questionnaire, sort of a thing at the last day of class or something. Where you, you don't have to wait for parents necessarily, it could be directed to your students, you got eighth-grade students, they can certainly give you feedback on what worked well, what didn't work well, depending on what you craft for your questions or whatever else, and none of that is a tragedy here. Teachers are, you know, more, the administration could figure that out themselves, but I think going through and living the kind of growth mindset of like, you know, we're all, we're all learners of this building, we can all kind of find ways of collecting input and trying to, trying to think about how we can do things better. For everybody involved, asking a first grader what they thought about it might not be provocative, but at some age, at some age, you know, it's. Yeah, right, so I think it is possible.
I, I just had a, could I ask Chris a question?
Absolutely.
So Kristen, I was wondering, is there, um, in, in the chapter's professional development, uh, and their kind of recertification process, is there any, is there any part of that that is feedback from either students or parents, or? I know this, the system was in process of changing at the end of my tenure, and for all I know, it's changed yet again, because oftentimes those systems change.
Right. There's not.
Okay. So, yeah, I think it's probably a worthy, it's probably worthy to take a look at.
Okay. So let's, uh, let's pick it up next week, or I'm sorry, next meeting, and discuss it in a little bit more depth after we've had you digest it. Great, thank you. Okay, uh, this is gonna take us to policy I K E. Okay, so I would look for a motion to approve, uh, the policy I K E, which is student promotion and retention.
So moved.
Uh, second. And I think this is the one, Patty, that's the one that, uh, we'll go back and look at later.
Yeah, I was gonna make a couple of comments too, do you wanna start?
Okay, no, no, please go.
May I just ask, was that Jeff, was that the name, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's okay.
Go ahead, Patty.
Um, so the School Board Association version is very, very brief, um, your version has more in it, and before you approve it, I would also like to point out that the retention of students, the administrative procedure is attached, and that's something that's required to be approved by the board. So whichever version you go with, I just wanted to clarify that we keep that administrative procedure intact. The, your current policy that is absolutely updated at 2007, has, some of the policy piece is in, already found within the administrative procedure, so you could keep it or not keep it, but I just think that the School Board Association version is pretty, it's brief, it's barely one paragraph, so. We'll put the legal references in from 2015. Just wanted to think about.
So. Uh, discussion? I saw Andy's finger first, so really.
Yeah, I guess I don't see anything about parents or guardians, so is that just something that's gonna be included?
So which policy are you looking at?
I'm sorry, I K E, the promotion and retention.
Are you looking at the school board's policy or our existing policy? Do I have both?
You're looking at the really short one, or?
Yeah, super short.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the one that I think is really brief, so you can keep wars and/or include the administrative procedure to the sample, because that does clarify exactly how the process flows, and that includes when you have to notify parents, it includes the discussion about the collaboration with parents, um,
And so to clarify, my motion was to, I guess more appropriately, to renew our existing policy with the addition of the administrative procedures.
Staff and administration.
Renew the current one?
Yes.
From 2007?
Yeah.
Okay.
To which the administrative procedures already apply.
Clarity.
Yeah, they're attached and part of, yeah.
Nate?
Um, I, I looked at these two different approaches, and I was trying to figure out where, you know, sort of where the backstory was, and I actually went to some of these legal references at 306, 114, and they were updated, and that one that was referred to, right, and the, and the older one, it doesn't even exist anymore. But, in kind of breaking it down a little bit, I also saw that it really feels like the old one from, from, from DCS from 2007, it feels, the, the language, the voice, the tone, sounds very punitive. The name of the policy is promotion and retention, but I don't think there's any mention of promotion, it's all about how do we retain students. And so I think, I mean, obviously, we would be updating, but I feel like this, this really sends the wrong message. It's kind of like our goal here at school is to find a way to retain your student and keep them back, which obviously is not the case, but I think that this, I think this kind of, the, the, the language in here goes a little bit too far in that direction. I like how in the, in the broader, uh, NHSBA version, it talks, it incorporates the idea of, you know, of course, all the competencies, it acknowledges that students are all over the place, and that sometimes students do need to be promoted, that would make sense in some cases, and so I think at least some instances, and putting it to the superintendent and the principal to decide based on all of these factors, making an informed decision. But I think as we said, just often, the number of times that students actually get retained these days is next to zero, and I would imagine that when there, the number of getting promotions is also next to zero, so.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I, I had forgotten to mention the second paragraph in the very brief policy is, it should be retained, because it talks about competency-based education.
Yep.
And mastery of competencies, that's right, so that is.
Which is the language current, not the, yeah, good, thank you.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
I was gonna ask that question, and I didn't know if we should. Um, so sometimes there's like legal guidance, but is there professional educational guidance into any language that, like, like, should we be, before we make a decision on this particular policy, should, should we have any information on best practice in terms of now that, now because competency education is in, in place, the impact of the changes that might occur?
Do you mean updated research on retention, is that?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, because so many schools are, are using competency, we heard tonight, Concorde's talking about competency recovery.
Yes.
So what is a, what is a way to do that, and if we're competency-based, do we have an obligation to, to have competency recovery, and if we have competency recovery, um, you know, are there still social, emotional reasons why we would want to retain a student? I mean, just all quest, all questions, and how do we reflect that?
And maybe that speaks to Nate's, um, point about it not being just about retention, but maybe a par, a nice positive paragraph about that we're competency-based school, and whenever possible, we do offer competency recovery, that that's not a re, not attaining a competency is not a reason for retention, and then kind of moving, because it does tend to be the very early primary grades that, you know, a student has a birthday that's a day over the cutoff, or kind of those outliers, it's very rare, especially in those other circumstances, so I think we could craft it a little bit better. If somebody wants to take that on, or if you want leadership to try, get, give a try, we can do it.
It, it does feel a little like, I don't, I don't, I mean, speaking of best practices, I don't know that I'm the first in what the best practices are, as much as, you know, maybe I could be, but I was hopefully, so maybe that would be something, if you were able to put something together, maybe look at the, the, the administrative procedure, and is that still, maybe updating the procedure from your perspective, would it be helpful for us, and. And I like what you were saying about changing the language and sort of talking more about what competency education means in terms of, I think if I went into this policy.
I like the administrative procedure that we have in place, I think it's pretty thorough, because, um, I, when I hear the, the word retention, and I push pretty hard when I hear it, um, and then Kristen knows I'm gonna push, and then she pushes. I don't think anybody's crazy about it at all, so it's not something we take lightly. Uh, and I like that we have all of those pieces, that the conversations are gonna happen early, it's not something you're spring on any, anyone, that it's gonna be a collaborative approach between all parties, so, um, we definitely can take a look at that, and then also try to incorporate something with competencies.
I'd agree.
And give it a try.
And just to add, this year has been an exceptional year, right?
Yeah.
The teachers have had to think very hard about what the reasons are for retaining a student. We've really pushed hard on them to, is this because of the pandemic, is this because they weren't present, is this, so, this has been an outlier year, but I do, I do, in the policy, just the word overcome the problem caused by retention, it, it's just that wording alone needs to be updated.
Yeah.
And a lot of, a lot of the reasons we even consider retention is for social, emotional learning needs, it's, it's, sometimes it's academics, that's a piece of it, that there's so many parts that go into why would we, we would retain a student. Um, and just to, just to clarify to a lot, a couple of our students, we are literally waiting until the end of May to make the decision, which is unheard, usually these decisions are made. Um, and so when we're doing placement, we're taking into consideration that the student may be retained, may not be retained, so either way, find a place for them in a classroom. And, and just had to do that to adjust for our kids, because we, you know, some of them, we just got them back, and so we're making sure that we are trying to meet their needs and make sure it's the best decision for them, because there's not a lot of great research out there that shows retention is good for kids, so. That's, so just to add to that.
Do we wanna table aside for the next meeting?
I'd like.
Okay.
You okay with that? Uh, we have I M A H, Patty, you think on that?
So.
That one's clean? Alright, I took a motion to rule I M A H.
So moved.
Second.
Ruled by Jeff, seconded by Nate. Discussion regarding I M A H, which is our daily physical activity. Paul? Jeff?
I guess the only question I had was on, uh, note number seven, establish relationships with community recreation programs. Just wanna make sure that that, you know, our coordination with DPR, that athletics program, we check that box and do we shift violation of our own. Policy.
Kristen, do you feel like there's a connection between the and, um, I'm so sorry. The recreational.
That's fine, it's no, no great word on us, so we, then we have it on camera.
Note number seven says that.
I was looking at drugs and tobacco, so.
That's fine. Establish relationships with community recreation and youth sports programs and agencies to coordinate and complement physical activity programs. And I wanna make sure that, you know, we're not gonna need violation of our policy if we approve this.
Oh, gotcha.
Do we actually do that in our coordination with DPR?
Does it need to be a? I think, so I think from 30,000 feet, I'll, I'll jump in here, I think from 30,000 feet, we can always coordinate better with DPR. I think DPR is out challenging here themselves with effectively their facility being closed. But I do know that, you know, for the most part, their programs, a lot from our house inside the school, and they're involving our students, so I think we're certainly satisfying it. I think it's more of just, you know, key communication, improve with DPR, and, you know, is there an opportunity maybe for them to have more programming? Possibly, but is always logistics side of it.
No, I guess, so I'm, I'm okay with that, I just wanted to bring out, the other one is, you know, I'm assuming that through our phys ed classes, we check box number nine, which is the tracking and evaluation methods, ensure those.
Yep. Yep, absolutely. Yep, thank you.
Alright, uh, any additional conversation on I M A H? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. So Andy asked for a couple of policies to be placed on the agenda, which are gonna go on, and we're very close to the agenda. Are you getting that, uh, mail? I have some awesome numbers in front of me, the policies.
I have a copy of it, there it is now.
Play it here?
Yes.
So they are.
V V V.
V V V.
And V A A.
So prior to us starting to review that, are there any updates that you wanna give us, or you just got them on, and you're gonna, and then start discussing?
Uh, they're on my computer, so if we could just get them on the agenda for us, yeah.
Okay, perfect, so we'll bring this up, and start talking about next, okay?
Um, just wanted to point out, you currently, there's a policy V A A, um, that you currently have, and the School Board Association eliminated that policy, but it's because it's incorporated into policy B A. So you'll see, if we, when you approve this policy, it will become B A.
Okay.
So Kathy has the B A in the drive for you, um, the school board's, um, drive, and it's very similar, it's just a different letter. And it's very similar, it's just a different letter, that's all.
Okay.
So BAA will be replaced by BA?
Yeah, yeah.
Who's lost an A?
They deleted BAA.
There are a couple of policies in there, um, there's two of them about hiring freezes from like early 2000. Do we need to like eliminate those or can we just kind of float in the abyss?
Yep. Yep. Yeah, Kathy's been, um, yeah, the, there's, there's so many policies and Kathy's been trying to get you caught up on the required by law policies, but there are some archaic and just don't need to be there, that can be withdrawn.
Okay.
Um, so I'll ask her to start getting those out here too. We've been, you guys have come through some serious policy work, which is awesome.
Uh, the lowering and fruit, the easy, the.
That's true, the withdrawal ones are easy.
The slowing and fruit, so if we get them on, we can, we can go after them pretty quick.
And if anyone is reviewing them and comes across something like that, just if you could just ping us, you know, thanks.
I'll, I'll, I'll do that.
That would be awesome, because it's, she just plows through them all the time. And if you come across one, like, you just need, go on.
Yeah, one of the hiring freeze ones is like half complete.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's awesome.
They only froze hiring on half the staff.
I mean.
She found something that had no approval date, so it was all kind of interesting.
Okay.
That's great, thanks.
So do you want me to email those to you?
Yeah, just email me the, um, the codes and we'll get it on there.
The, okay.
Thanks.
All right, so that satisfies policy. We didn't have anything for international items unless.
Um, I did have something.
You did?
Oh, yeah, it was just the, um, the music department.
Oh.
That was awesome, right?
That's awesome, too.
Did you see that?
I did.
Yeah, so they, um, that was shared and I did let, um, our music department know that I was sharing that with board because that was just absolutely amazing. Um, so.
If you might not have gotten a chance to.
Yeah, if you did get a chance, um, to look at it, please do. It was part of the, um, diversity, equity, and inclusion initiative here. And I think, um, Kristen had shared with you that, um, Mr. Tron has been, that's been a passion of his and he's done some great stuff and, um, please take a look at it if, if you have one, buddy.
Yeah, he interviewed Melissa.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm ready.
And it was published and it's very cool.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome, awesome. Ask of, uh, was that just the D, so the D I J that he was referring to is happening at school or was happening with a group in the state that you, did you follow in his?
He, he's, I think he's with a group of the state.
The state's group, yeah, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, but I think the, and it was the state, but the point was Melissa trying things and coming out of her, you know, talking about that it's, it can be uncomfortable and you might make mistakes and you might take, you know, but being vulnerable and just saying, hey, I'm, I'm gonna, it's important to me and I'm gonna try it and I'm gonna do my best and.
No, that's, that's fantastic. Thank you, thank you for bringing up that mention, that's a, a great, shout out to him.
Yeah.
Very good.
Like to pass along our kudos, maybe to, to them.
Did you do that?
Oh, my God.
Of course.
That's great.
I love passing on kudos, yeah.
All right, so, uh, public comments? And Ms. Baker, I believe you would be the only one that would be public in this. The rest of the public has abandoned the meeting.
That's what I'm saying, I'll get you right on camera, let me zoom right in.
If you are anything, you are persistent with your publicness.
Well, yeah. Um, no, I don't have any comments, so.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for attending. Uh, so with that being said, it is, uh, 8:39. And I will look for a motion to move in the non-public per NHR 79183 and 2, small letter C.
Some more.
Moved by Gigi, seconded by Andy. Requires roll call, Andy?
Yeah.
Nate?
Yes.
Gigi?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Self, yes. We are. We are no longer public, is that?